All this meeting to order, please. Marnie, would you call the roll? Please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Here.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Pender.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And I've asked the chief to lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Chief Abel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Bear with us here, we're gonna have a quick prayer and we're gonna move on. Lord, we just thank you for this awesome day that you have made today. Let us rejoice in it and be glad in it. And, Lord, we ask that you would lead each and every one of us up here to the best of our abilities. And we just ask a blessing, all the people that are in the audience, all the residents, businesses, and everything pertaining to this meeting. We ask a blessing over all the family members represented here on council and staff. And we just thank you for just everything, and we ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. So, council, requests for deletions or emergency additions? Anybody, Elizabeth, you have anything? Vice Mayor Mahoney? Mark?
Yes, sir.
Henry?
I do. I do.
You do?
Yeah. Trying to think. Tab 19, I believe.
All right, tab 19.
I would like to move it up. With the indulgence of the board. That's in reference to the appointment of the manager. I just think it's something kinda exceeds everything else we could possibly think of tonight. And to have it positioned so far in the agenda, I would like to address it early on.
Okay, what are you thinking about, Henry?
Well, I don't have a position, but I'd like to just address it early on, whatever you feel would be agreeable. I think Mark is one of the driving forces behind that item. Mark, do you have an idea?
It's listed as a motion, so I'd have to defer to the village council, our attorney, where that would fit in best.
Yeah, you all can move it anywhere. The reason it was there is because it's a motion, so that's where motions are on your agenda when it's set. But you all can move that individual item to anywhere you see fit. So, anywhere between now and the end of the meeting, you can move it to.
Right. Well, I'd like to bring it as soon as possible within the proper order, the proper structure. Do you have an op?
Great idea, Henry.
Yes.
We can move it after, how about after village manager and communications, or after the consent agenda?
That'd be fine, I just wanna bring it to the...
So let's do it after the consent agenda.
That'd be fine. I'll say, I'll say thank you.
Okay, with that being said, I think the first thing then is reports, presentations, and announcements. And first one is FDOT landscaping project.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Monica Rodriguez, I am the FDOT project manager for the landscape project. But before I start the presentation, I'd like to give you, express my gratitude for this opportunity to present the project and the teams working with the project. Okay. I'm going to provide you this presentation based on three different aspects. The first is gonna be the overview to the landscape standalone project. We are gonna go after that to show you information about the grant opportunities. And last, we will share with you the FDOT maintenance responsibilities and FDOT contacts for those efforts.
Can we just, can I just let the audience know where we're talking about? Because I believe we're talking about from Sea Oats Beach to Jerome Street in Alamo Rata. Just so they have a land, you know, where, so they realize what we're talking about. So AJ, am I correct there? Okay, so Jerome Street is right there between the Moose, by the Moose? Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, as I mentioned, I am the project manager, but I also serve at the district landscape manager for the department. And with me is Natalie Cordero, she is the FDOT beautification grant coordinator. And part of the design group, the consultant, the landscape, the registered landscape architect is Cheryl Callender. And Marisol Ortega is the certified arborist working in this project. With me is also Rodolfo Roman, the community outreach specialist. Okay. This is the project limit. It is a landscape standalone project, the FDOT number is 436430-1. It's in State Row 5 over Sea Highway. And the beginning of the project is in mile marker 7502, which is lower Matacumbre. And the end of the project is mile marker 8144 over Matacumbre. We are gonna be doing landscaping throughout the length of the project. This slide represents the FDOT compass, which is the focus area that the state is create every time that, or focus every time that we design a project, a roadway project or a landscape project. And those areas are safety, workforce development, technology, community, resiliency, and robust supply chain. This landscape project is focused on the safety of the area by creating a buffer with new planting between the main road and the residential areas, and the heritage trail. We also are providing resiliency consideration because we are planting those areas where more susceptible to erosion and to protect the shoreline, or the areas that are close to the shoreline. We are enhancing the corridor, and we feel that the landscape will bring a sense of community and also creating FDOT employees, local contractor, and workforce opportunities for the contractors and the industry of the landscape and the community. Since the very beginning of the project, we have been in partnership with the village. And back in 2017, there was a resolution signed by the village, agreeing to sign a memorandum of maintenance agreement. And soon enough, the agreement was signed in 2017. There was the storm Ian that affected the area. And then the roadway project coming after the storm to restore, move out our project a little bit. And also, two additional miles were added to the original limits of the project. From 77 miles, we went to 75 miles. And last year, a new resolution was signed to agree, to incorporate those two miles to the agreement. And the amendment to the memorandum of agreement was included, was signed and executed. Yes, sorry. So the design team, Marisol and Cheryl and us, has been working with the public work director, Andrew, and collecting information what plant material best performs in the village. And we analyze those recommendations, and we are working with them to provide landscape materials that last longer and low maintenance and resist the wind and the salt and has the tolerance, and at the same time, to provide different type of textures and colors to the corridor. This selection is based on the areas or large tree where we are less limited. We don't have underground overhead utilities to use for this proposed material. And we have the setback that we can plant. Between those, we have the gombolimbo, greenbore woods, the fiddle wood, lanser wood, spy wood. And this other group is what we call the understory trees. Those are more smaller. We are considered this group to place under the utility lines and areas that doesn't grow too much and allow the visibility to the scenic highway. And under the group of the shrub, we have this group, the doom flowers, so palmero, golden creeper, cocoa plants, and stoppers, and greenbore woods. Those are the dominant group that we are considering. It doesn't mean that we don't add another type of material, but those are the more stronger group that we are considered to be proposed in the project. So we have two type of layout or configurations. The first type will be to plant in only one side of the roadway, which is the majority of the project. And this condition is where the residential area are. And this is the buffer that will protect and create a safe area to the residential and to the heritage trail. We will build, we will install the material from the right-of-way lines and under. And thus, this happened in the lower Matacumbre, and when we go to the upper Matacumbre, it switches the opposite. We will landscape the other side of the road. And the other, the other consideration is this layout where we have landscaping in both sides of the road. This is more when you start seeing commercials or conservation areas in the center of the project where the field areas are. We are delineating with the landscaping, the heritage trail. We are planting landscaping where the susceptible areas for erosion are. And that way, we can protect the roadway and the shoreline. And we will try to consider here small plant material that allows the view. This is an overlap of the two projects that are right now, the landscape project with the Florida Aqueduct project, which is the permit. And we wanted to show you where the conflict between the two projects, and it was the reason that we changed our schedule. So now we have in June this year, a resumeral of 90% plant sumeral. We have in September, 100% face sumeral. Production is scheduled for December, and the letting for next year. Construction start day, current start day is scheduled for summer 2025. The construction will take about six months. And after that, we enter into establishment period, which is a period for two years that the contractor, the FDOT contractor, is still responsible for the maintenance of the project. And we will be monitoring with inspection, the team, the design team will be doing inspection, quarterly inspection, to make sure that the contractor has restored or fixed the project. After that, we hand the project to the village and continue with the responsibility of the maintenance. The project, the current project cost is 1.4 million. And that's the face, the first aspect of this presentation. The second aspect of this presentation, we want to bring you the information about the beautification grants. This is authorized by the Florida statute 3392405 and further defined in the Florida Administrative Code, Chapter 1440. This grant cover up to $100,000 per applicant. It is for the Florida local governance entity interested to apply for them. It covers the cost for landscaping and irrigation. It works as a reimbursement process, and it requires a matching amount. Every year, we go through the grant application. July usually is when the grant is announced. And we truly recommend the village to take opportunity of these grants. And we check the concept that the village might have, and we compare with our work program. If there's no conflict, we authorize those, and the applications are due usually in October. We go to a regent system to evaluate all the proposals statewide. And in around December, the letters of award are announced. And from that point, we start with the, with the design of the project, and we go through a review and design, like a permit. We really recommend that you take a look at this, it's really interesting. And the last aspect of this presentation is to share what are the current maintenance responsibility for landscaping. So at this moment, the mowing, all the mowing, and the turf, the little pickup landscaping maintenance is being done by the village through the contract number ASW4ARO. And maintenance has to meet all the requirements by the maintenance rating program. And that is being managed by the Weber Infrastructure, which is the contractor working with this. And every time that it require any correction of any deficiencies, they will contact the village for this type of corrections. The FDOT maintenance contacts are Andres Castaneda, he is the engineer in charge of the program, and Simon Gutierrez, which is here with me today. And they both work with Umberto Serrano, which is the project manager from the Weber Companies. And we are providing all the emails in case anything you need to reach out to them. We are leaving here in the, in the presentation. And as last, my name again with my email and the email of Roman, Rodolfo, for any information that you might have. With this, I jump to questions and answers.
Council, we have any questions? We have any questions?
No, she did a great job. It was thorough. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of y'all coming.
Okay.
I just have a request, before you leave, if I could have your card or the gentleman with you, please?
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie? Got it? Okay. Okay. We're gonna open public comment, this is general public comment. Marnie, do we have any takers for that?
Yes, we have Van Cadenhead, followed by Frank Derfler and Tom Raffinello.
Good afternoon, council, I'm Van Cadenhead from Alamo Rata. In 1869, Edward Arlington Robinson wrote a poem, and it went something like this. Whenever Richard Corey went downtown, we people on the pavement looked at him. He was a gentleman from soul to crown, clean, favored, and imperially slim. And he was always quietly arrayed, and he was always human when he talked. But still, he fluttered pulses when he said, "Good morning," and he glittered when he walked. And he was rich, yes, richer than a king, and admirably schooled in every grace. And fine, we thought that he was everything, to make us wish that we were in his place. So on we worked and waited for the light, and went without the meat and cursed the bread. And Richard Corey, one calm summer night, went home and put a bullet through his head. Paul Simon, the famous singer-songwriter, liked that poem and gave us this in the 60s. They say that Richard Corey owns one half of this whole town, with political connections to spread his wealth around. Born into society a banker's only child, he had everything a man could want, power, grace, and style. But I work in his factory, and I curse the life I'm living. I curse my poverty and wish that I could be, yes, I wish that I could be, Richard Corey. The papers print his picture almost everywhere he goes. Richard Corey at the opera, Richard Corey at a show. And the rumor of his party and the orgies on his yacht, well, he surely must be happy with everything he's got. He freely gave to charity and had the common touch, and they were grateful for his patronage, and they thanked him very much. So my mind was filled with wonder when the evening headlines read, "Richard Corey went home last night and put a bullet through his head." That's food for thought, food for thought, food for thought. Thank you.
Next.
Mr. Derfler.
Good evening, council. A quick three minutes of, a quick three minutes of not being quite so serious, okay? 29th, the 29th gigantic nautical market, the 24th and 25th of this year, coming. For those of you in the audience, Saturday, the 24th, if you wanted to go someplace north, or if you wanted to go someplace south, get past the park before 8:00 a.m. Why are we doing this? Why do we do the gigantic nautical market? Well, I think most of you know, over 29 years, the number is in the millions. Millions of dollars, close to 3 million at this point, that we have given in scholarships to students from the Upper Keys and as donations to Take Stock and Children. An interesting thing happened this morning, I was talking to the sheriff, our wonderful sheriff, and I brought up an article that was in the recent Florida Trend magazine, and it postulated that if you have a good scholarship program in a town where the students can see something going forward and they have hope, crime is lower. That these students actually have a reason to conform to humanity. The sheriff agreed. Take a look at our criminal statistics, they're pretty good, knock on wood. And Take Stock and Children does a wonderful job. The various organizations in this community do a wonderful job when those kids walk across that stage. The Upper Keys Rotary Club follows students through all four years or five years of college to their bachelor's degree or to their certification. We have marine mechanics, we have three doctors who are practicing. We have a wide variety of engineers, and we have one nuclear engineer. We have all kinds of students that have helped to contribute, not only to this community, but to Florida in general. So, Saturday, the 24th, Sunday, the 25th, it's called a boat show with a beach, the gigantic nautical market. I hope you all be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, next is Tom Raffinello, followed by Joe Wishmeyer.
Tom Raffinello, Alamo Rata resident. Tonight, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the Alamo Rata Community Alliance, so I'd like to have five minutes, please. First thing I wanna talk about, I have to put glasses on, I have terrible eyes, I don't even recognize faces. First thing I wanna talk about is the village manager. I see that you have it on the agenda, should be your first priority. And I say this, believe me, anything I say is about business. It's not personal, 'cause I think there are a lot of wonderful people out there. But we represent, I feel I represent the residents and the taxpayers. And that circus for the village manager was one for the ages. You got a chance to make up for it a little bit, and I'd like to see you follow through. If anything else happens, it gives the appearance of impropriety. And we don't want that. We don't wanna have to double-check everything you do because we don't trust the result. And we're working towards that. Secondly, I'd like to discuss, can I discuss the ride-share cancellation? I sat on the ride-share board with some very good people.
There is an agenda item on that.
Yeah, it was canceled. It was pulled.
Well, there's a different agenda item on that, so if you wanna talk about it now, but you can use your time now, or if you wanna talk, okay.
I'm wasting time, I wanna talk about it now. I sat on the panel, we did a very, very good job. We went over every piece of information that was on there to try and give the residents and the taxpayers their money's worth. Our recommendation was the best, I believe four out of the six people concurred. We asked questions where appropriate. We didn't get a lot of direction and had a score. I thought the group from admin did a good job. But that, pulling that is a waste of time. I've sat, I was 35 years a federal administrator and manager, had state responsibility for Florida. If you have somebody that does not fill out the application properly, you're allowed to throw it out. You're allowed to give them a zero. You're allowed to tell them not to bother docking your door anymore. To do your process again because of that is a terrible mistake, a waste of time for everybody. Village manager, I covered. Here's something that, that needs to be said, I think. Dissent. Our government was built, and this country was built on dissent. And you're gonna hear from me, when I don't agree with what you're doing or anybody else is doing, I'm gonna give you my opinion, because my responsibility, I have children here, I'm a taxpayer here. I'm not looking to do anything but make this better with your cooperation. a taxpayer here, I'm not looking to do anything but make this better with your cooperation. There are some that'll come up here and blow sunshine up your skirt, that's not me. And they may come up and say he's a little hard-headed, but I am. But I'll always tell you the truth, and I'll stand behind anything that I tell you. Dissent is healthy. If everybody's agreeing all the time, you got a problem. There's nothing wrong with not agreeing. Five-oh votes are a folly. We, this, Bill Clinton won the election with 43% of the vote, and some of you people there didn't win by unanimous decision. Some of you didn't even get half the votes. So be reasonable, be realistic, and don't think, I was born at night, but not last night, don't think you're putting anything over on anybody, because you're not. And anything that we say, Isla Marata Community Alliance has a newsletter that has over 3,000 readers. It's, it's very well done. If anybody has a problem with anything that we say or that we allege, call me. I'll meet you anywhere, back of a cab, baseball field. If you wanna talk, I'll talk to you. Because I don't make stuff up, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, and, and I'm in this for the long run. So I think dissent is important, I think without dissent, you're doomed to failure. Are there any other questions? Anybody got anything else? I think that's it for me. Appreciate it, and I'll talk to you later.
Thank you, Tom. Marnie, anybody else signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Wishmeyer is on Zoom. Give me just a second to get him up here. Okay, Mr. Wishmeyer, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Our plantation key. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I remember when council members were going to make a list for important items to be put on the meeting agendas. Each member was going to submit at least three items for discussion. That seemed like a great idea so that we could make progress on them at every meeting. Noticeably absent, again, from tonight's agenda, are discussions about the fills, strategic planning, noise ordinance, Founder's Park master plan, Island Silver and Spice, just to, just to name a few. There was also to be a workshop regarding the baseball field renovations. With only 12 scheduled meetings a year, one a month, even though it spills over two nights, you need to prioritize these crude, these critical items so that we can continue to make advances on them. The contract with Attention Media, with Carlos, was pulled from the January council meeting agenda. After working since October, month to month, while waiting for a contract renewal, he suddenly got terminated. After keeping the public informed and conducting many surveys, including the fills and the freebies, I can't believe that this council, especially Councilman Rosenthal and Councilwoman Mahoney, were informed or agreed to this action. Social media was an important tool to keep the public up to date on events and issues. After reviewing the bill from Wyssarota for October, November, and December for $227,688.50, I again wonder why the village doesn't have in-house attorney. There have been discussions in the past about that to save the village money. Maybe it's time to revisit that. Speaking about saving money, don't you think that spending over $1,700,000 for an open-air pavilion is also a little excessive at the Green Turtle Hammock? I see the village manager selection fiasco is continuing again tonight. I hope you all can get it together tonight and agree for a positive outcome. At the January meeting, I vowed to try and be more positive. Please help me do this with positive actions by all council members so that we all can work together. Thank you.
All right, Marnie, anybody else?
I was just handed a slip by a Mr. Janek, if you are willing to allow him to speak without giving it to us before.
That's what we wanna let him speak. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Come on, young man.
I do wanna make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Henry.
I just have to.
Come on.
I just have to make a comment in reference to Carlos's termination. I was not, again, I was not informed of that happening.
Ditto on that for me, Henry. I don't know where you got that from, so.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Joe Janak. I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee here in Isla Marata, and I've been asked suddenly to represent the pickleball community here. I would, what they're asking is that maybe we could take a more aggressive stance on deciding how we're gonna handle the pickleball situation. As you can tell, and you can hear, it's, it's been a sport that has exploded, not only in this community, but, but around the country and the world as well. It's gonna be in the Olympics, et cetera, et cetera. I don't need to go on and sell it. The problem here is we only have three courts. The management of the park has tried their best to accommodate other pickleballers on the basketball courts. Of course, you take up the basketball players. So the problem is that I think it's getting to a boiling point among the pickleballers in this community, and there are quite a few of them, if you haven't noticed, that something needs to be done with the park. I, I understand that you have some kind of master plan and 10-year plan, and there's a baseball field and thing, but if you ever come to this park, there's nobody playing baseball, but the fields are full, the pickleball courts are full, the tennis courts are full, the marina is going crazy, and I just think something needs to be done to address those things more currently than in the future, and particularly in the pickleball court. I know that Maria and the, and the gang in the office there are, are constantly trying to placate complaints that, you know, the courts are too full, who has priority, you know, and they're full all the time, even at night. And if there's no type of programming or supervision, it's gonna get out of control. There's already been vandalism there, because we, at night, they let them play, and, and things happen. So it's a combination of more courts and keeping the programs going, both for the pickleball, both in the tennis courts, as well as the soccer fields and the other attractions that we have at this beautiful park. So I'd like to see something, maybe in the next meeting, where we could address the pickleball situation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, with that being said, public comment is now closed. Okay. All right, so the Parks and Rec thing has been removed. Is there anybody else gonna speak on any things, Kimberly? Anything change from today?
So as we move forward, there may be a few alterations, but for example, Councilman Greg's tab four, he has approved us to remove that. We're gonna approach that in a different way. You'll see that topic come up in March, but it's gonna be dealt with a different way. So, no, I think, Mayor, you're good to move forward.
Okay. All right, then, let's move to Mayor, Council Communications. The first one is a discussion regarding potential staggering of councilmember terms. Councilman Elizabeth, or Councilwoman Elizabeth Jolen.
Thanks. So just briefly, in our effort to improve the village every day, I wanted to bring the conversation to you to talk about whether staggering terms would help with the notion of stability in the community. And, and John has prepared sort of an explanation of what that would look like. It's a little bit messy, but, but I just wonder what the consensus is here, and what we have currently is that every election, all five seats can change, and, and that does cause some difficulty. Thank you.
You wanna say something, Mark? Or John, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I didn't know if you want me to chime in, just on some of the back, the background in terms of the, if the council wants to do this, it would, or wants to propose it, it would need to be done by a referendum. So could direct my office to, we would prepare an ordinance, and we could bring it back to get it on to the November ballot. It's important to note that that, since the vote would be happening at the same election as the next council election, the staggering wouldn't take place until 2026, because the 2024 election wouldn't be subject to, to that yet. So it would, you'd have, if the voters approved it, there would still be one more two-year term of all five councilmembers up for election. After that, then the initial phase would stagger them, so it would be set, set up in the ordinance, you know, seats, whatever, you know, three seats would be for either two or four years, two seats would be either for one or two years. And I say two or four or one or two, because it depends on the length of terms that, that you all might wanna consider as well. And the reason why I raise that is because staggered two-year terms means you'll have an election every year. So in the odd-numbered years, there are not, there is not currently a countywide election in odd-numbered years, so the village would have to foot the bill for that election for, for anyone that we could not piggyback on to a countywide election. Excuse me. For, if it were to stagger four years, then obviously we would be on the even-year cycle, and the, the village election could then piggyback on to a countywide election, so there wouldn't be additional expense for the village to do that. So that's why I raised the issue in terms of two versus four, because there is a, a cost that, that the council and the public should be aware of if it's, if it's two.
Okay. So, Counsel, are we?
I'll just add one thing.
Go ahead.
In order, the most recent number given out by the Election Supervisors Office is to conduct a, a election is $25,000. So that, I don't know how long it's gonna be there, is it gonna be there for the next couple of years? But if we were to do it now, it is $25,000.
Yeah, but John, we're gonna have to put something on the referendum for, for a year, because we're only two years, and every time it's came up, it's been, to my knowledge, it's been voted down.
Yeah, so it would, it would, either way, a stagger, a change to a stagger term would have to be on a referendum. The question is just, is it a stagger term, keeping the, the term at two years as is, and then just making the adjustment in two of the seats to stagger them? Or is it to, also to change to four years to, to get them on the cycle with, where you're only on countywide elections?
Because, I mean, every year, doing an election every year in two years, I'm, I'm not for that. That's just me, though, so.
I'm with you, buddy. I think an, an election every year is just too much, and I, I will remind us that the original council charter, as it was set up, provided for staggered terms of four years each, and I got to sit on that second round of that and, and experience that, and I can tell you both the four-year terms and the staggering worked very, very well. I know there's been some resistance to that, but we're not making that judgment call tonight. We're simply putting it out there for the people to decide. And I think it's been a long time, and I think it's worthy of asking, having witnessed what happens, we, Buddy and I and Henry were, had the unique, I don't know what you wanna call it, experience to be on a brand-new council, all five members, brand-new. I was kinda brand-new. So there's some drawbacks with that, and there needs to be some long-term depth of knowledge and experience from those who are not being re-elected or up for election. You know, five brand-new councilmembers means five new learning curves and five new first years, and I just can't reiterate enough how valuable it is to have somebody else, and we've seen that on our staff. If it weren't for Maria and some of the others, we would have been in a world of hurt. So I also believe in, from our experience in hiring managers and others, that it provides a longer term of stability, that someone seeking employment here can rely on, that their employers will be consistent over a longer period of time, and that's more attractive to an employer, employee coming to visit with us. So for those reasons, I would be in favor of the staggering, as well as a four-year council term.
I mean, the mosquito control does the same thing, Mark. They're, they're four-year terms, but two of them are staggered. So there's three that, and another two.
I think in the original council, what they did is they took the top three vote-getters, got the longer terms, and the bottom two vote-getters got shorter terms, or something close to that. So there's a, John and his firm know many different ways to establish that if we wanted to convert back over to that.
Yeah, there's ways to do that, I'd say there's ways to do that with staggering like that, or you could even just, the beauty of your seats is that they're not assigned, any one of you can run for any seat, so we could also just say seats, you know, two and four are gonna be, you know, the short ones, and then people would know that when running as well. So there's, there's different ways we can do it, we can address that.
It's been voted down a lot of times, so I think you're beating a dead horse, but that's up to you, if you wanna put it on.
I, I agree with you that it has, but I don't think we've seen the negative side of it until most recently, and maybe, maybe some minds have changed, and maybe they haven't. I know some in this room will never change, and that's just fine. It's, as we heard earlier, you know, dissension or, or diversity is a strength, and I, I believe in that, but we've seen the positive and the negative, and maybe it's time to take a second look and vote.
I'd leave it up to the voters, and I, I'm not for it, that's just me, so, whatever.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So the question here is, is really, do we wanna put it out for a referendum? That's the first question. And then if, if that is, whatever that is, yes or no, sort of the, the follow-up is, is could I request that in the meantime, we request a more robust onboarding experience for anybody who's elected? Something that's very formalized, that one could refer to, so that it's very clear that after an election, this is what happens between November and your first meeting, that kind of thing. I, I sent a quick email to you about it, which I know the, sort of, timing was poor, I know you're very busy, but, so this is, my follow-up is, can we direct our staff to create a formal onboarding period, process for anyone who's, who is elected?
Well, you know, the league offers that. League of Cities offers a new elected official's training.
So what I mean is, is more specifically, like, before your first meeting, the staff understands you have a phone, you have an email, you have a tablet, you have a, a training meeting, it's already scheduled, so even when you're, when you're running, you know that your training is already set for this day. And of course, there are required ethics and additional training we can get, but I'm saying within the, with our, within our local, our local village hall, there is some training.
Sure.
And, and that's something that we don't have right now. It's sort of, we're sort of winging it.
I think she's speaking out of what you and I went through.
Yeah.
But, but the thing is.
No, no, nobody, that's nothing personal to anybody, just a comment.
The league offers that constantly for new people that have just got elected, and it's good, as a new person, I know for me, and I think you and Pete did it as well, when you first got in 2020.
So in a formal process, then that kind of information would be outlined and detailed, along with, for example, here's your phone, all before you come in on your first meeting? It's all, it's, it's kinda like the president, you know?
They need to be educated somewhat.
And that's a pretty easy request, really. I mean, in fact, I'm surprised we don't have it.
Well, do we, I, I think we're, I'm, got it confused in my mind, we're talking about a charter amendment proposal, ordinance.
Totally.
For that, and then what you've got is a, that's not a charter thing, is it?
So, so it's, it's, it's two things. We're asking, do we wanna put on a referendum that we work on staggered terms?
Yes.
Question. Additionally, in order to help with stability here, which I think we can improve, can we give direction to, in the meantime, while we're waiting for the voters to decide on whether we wanna work on staggered terms, can we ask the staff to create a formal onboarding procedure for anyone who's elected, which is coming up?
Sure.
And I would recommend, I mean, I think it's a good thing to address with any new manager coming in, that that's an expectation, that your manager established that, because I do agree that it's an important thing for any new councilmember, and frankly, returning councilmembers, to get refreshers on certain items. And, and absolutely, I think that's something that, that the manager should set up and have prepared prior to any, any first substantive meeting. have prepared prior to any, any first substantive meeting.
Thank you for, for chiming in on that. And, and since it's such a small administrative detail, I can imagine that even our current interim manager could give that direction if we requested it. It's, it's not, I mean, again, it's pretty basic, but it's just something we don't have. So.
John, it can also be done as an orientation, that all the council are involved. You have a lunching, it's, it's not only, it's, it could be, you know, three-quarters of a day or something, and everybody?
Whatever, whatever.
Goes through.
I'd recommend it happen whenever, especially after there's any election, even if all five sitting council members are re-elected. It's good to get a refresher sometimes on these things. Because it's, Florida law on government in the sunshine isn't always intuitive.
Okay.
Go ahead, Henry.
I've got a different viewpoint, mainly on the procedures. I'm very much opposed to the five districts. I'm very much opposed to someone at the 11th hour moving from the district he is in to avoid possibly being non-elected. I would be very much in agreement with taking the top five people and dedicating that five to either three and two or whatever terms you want to allocate. That's my position. I think the procedure is as more, as equally important as to whether it's two years or four years or et cetera. I would feel comfortable with the first five. The first three is two, and the other three, the other two are whatever. And that's the way I would like to see the election handled. So you may not agree with me on that particular idea, but as to whether it's two or four or three or whatever, I think, as far as I'm concerned, the easiest, easiest application is, you pick the first five, divide it up, who's got the three, who's got the two, and away we go. So that's my recommendation and comments.
I think it's the way it is at large. You don't have to, you can live in the north end of the village or the south end, and you can run for whatever seat you want to run in.
Okay.
But I, that's just my personal opinion.
But my, but my reasoning is to avoid people moving from seat to seat, to avoid competition. If somebody wants to vote against me, and I say, boy, I'll, I'll never meet or beat this person, but so-and-so is there, and I'm in four, but so, somebody in three, well, I could beat that person. So I'm going to change. I'm not going to change right away. I'm going to change at the 11th hour. And now I disenfranchise that person for voting against me. You've taken that vote away from that person. He's not voting just for this, that, and the other. He has a reason to vote against me, and I should not be able to take that away from him by just moving a seat. That's what I'm trying to say. You've disenfranchised somebody that wants to vote specifically opposed to one person. And I've, I have a, to me, that's a problem.
Mark or Elizabeth, you guys?
Well, I, I think what's exciting about this conversation is that we're having, that we're acknowledging that, that there is, improvement can be made. So there are a couple of issues on the table, maybe we could just, you know, address those.
Okay, so you've had a robust conversation. I agree with Councilwoman Jolynn. It's very exciting. And at this point, we need a motion and a vote for whatever.
Is this going to be just for the orientation?
No, it's, no, the, I, I'm going to go with John on that one. I'm sorry, our attorney, on that one, that the orientation really needs to be, it's just, it's guidance to your manager.
You are the manager.
Okay, so it's guidance to the village manager, whoever that might be, now and in perpetuity, that what you're saying is that you would like to have them create a more robust onboarding of your council people. Completely agree with you. That is certainly what we do in the county, and.
It could go on our after-action report.
I would say that it's actually much larger than that. I think it's an expectation of your manager and your staff. So I think it should just be, if you're well-managed, you would do that. But referring to John, I think what we need to do is, if you would like to make a motion on the actual item, and John can, I know he's been making copious notes, if you would actually like to, some, whichever one of the things that have appealed to any of you, we need to have a motion and a vote.
So there are three things that were discussed, and I would just, and if any one of them is something that the council would like, or the majority of the council would like to see, the directive would be, for me, obviously, to go back, draft an ordinance, bring it back to you all, and that would be heard, there would be two readings on that, well, assuming it passed first reading, it would be second reading before it even, before it got to the voters. The three things that I've heard discussed are, number one, staggered terms, do we want to stagger them? Do we want to propose staggering them to the voters? Two, do we want to change from, propose changing from two years to four years? And then, three, which is what Councilmember Rosenthal just brought up, do we want to propose changing from five individual ballot sections, where you have seats one through five, to what it sounded like was a single election, where everybody runs in one election, and the top vote-getters are the winners? So the electorate would then vote for up to, well, if there's five people running, they would vote for up to five, they would fill in the bubble up to five, and then whichever five got the top votes would be the ones who, who won. So those are the, those are the three potential elements of an ordinance that I've heard discussed today. If there's any others, certainly, we, we can add.
So we need to vote three times? Vote on each one?
No, and I think, I mean, we can, I mean, we can do this as a consensus. I mean, if, if you just give me, I mean, I think we should go around. Are you okay with it? Do you want to see that? You know, Councilmember A, do you want to see this? Councilmember B, do you want to see this? And if three people say, I want to see this in an ordinance, I will put it in an ordinance, bring it back, where you'll have a formal vote, motion and vote. If there are not three for, if there's three for some and not for others, then you'll only get the three that, there were, they'll only get the one that there's three. If there aren't three for any of them, then we will move on and not discuss this again until it's brought up.
So let's go on, John. Let's do that, the two-year thing, right now, two-year thing. If you're, if you're in favor of the two-year and term limits?
No, no.
It would be, let's start first, staggered terms.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want me to bring back an ordinance proposing staggered terms?
Staggered terms is going to have to go onto a referendum.
Correct. All of this would be.
So it's not an ordinance yet?
Well, it would, it would have to be an ordinance for you to pass to put it on the, the referendum. So all of this, everything we're discussing would be by referendum proposed to the voters. So I'd have to bring it back in an ordinance for you all to, to pass to formally put it on to the ballot. But, but Councilwoman Jolynn is correct, ultimately, the voters will have to say on, on all of these things we're discussing right now.
Okay, so let's, let's call the vote.
Wait a second. So if we go with the staggered two years, that means there's an election every year?
Correct.
No.
Okay. So do you want to start with the two, changing, which one would you all like, would you like to start with, the decision, do we want to do staggered terms, or do we want to do, potentially change two to four? Because you could do one without the other. You could do staggered terms and stay with two years, or you could move to four years and not propose staggered. So that's why I've broken them up, but I, I think they're all kind of, they're, they are kind of tied together, but you could technically do each one separately. So that's why I started with staggered. Do you want to do, well, which one would you guys like to start with?
I'm not interested in two at all. I think if, if we're going to do it, we need to go to four. That's my personal opinion.
I agree with Buddy.
Public comment?
John, there's no, this is mayor council communications, right?
If, correct. If you all make a motion and there's a vote, then, then yes, there'll be public comment that would be required.
I would agree that, that, that the, the request is to create an ordinance to put on to a referendum that we move to four-year terms that are staggered.
Yes.
And, and it's not, it's not our choice. It's just, the voters get to choose that. So they can say no, and that's totally fine.
We just asked them the question. That's all we get to do. We do not decide the answer.
Right, that's, so, okay, then the next question is about the ballots. Oh, sorry.
It's supposed to be one at a time, right?
Well, we did that one. Didn't we just have three people who voted?
There, two people said they wanted to do four-year staggered terms. They wanted to propose four-year staggered terms.
Three people did.
Was there, okay.
Buddy just said you did.
You, okay.
I did and Mark.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I missed the mayor.
And I did.
Okay, there's three.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I missed you there.
It's you, Sharon.
I know, but if you guys three put it on there, let them vote you down.
Well, and again, this will come back before you all for a full discussion and public comment, too.
Let the people vote. Four years doesn't work.
I just have to voice an opinion. I'd leave it just the way it is.
I would, too. I would, too.
Really think about it, just the way it is.
Two-year terms?
Yeah. Two-year terms, every couple of years, we do it again. But I would have to impress to do away with the seats.
So that's our next question.
Yeah, is, do, do you all want to, want me to put together an ordinance to bring back to the council, five elections for seats one through five, to a single election where everybody running, runs in one election, and the voters, I guess, the voters would pick, you could do.
Top five.
Top five, they, you know, pick up to five, and they can pick, you know, anywhere from zero to five, and whoever gets the top votes gets, sorry.
I'll start it off. I'm not for that. I like to keep it just the way it is right now.
I'm with the mayor on that.
I third that, third that.
Okay, so I'm with Henry on that, but, so that doesn't pass right now, that's fine.
Okay, so I will bring back an ordinance for everyone's consideration.
But it's for the voters.
Correct. This would be an ordinance to put it on the ballot. I will bring back an ordinance to put on the ballot, a proposed change to go from two-year terms, where everybody runs at, at the same time, to four-year staggered terms.
And then, and then could you just humor me, fellow council people, to ask that we put the, for an addition to be made to the after-action report, which says that the manager, whoever that is, will create a formal process for any new councilman before the next election? Could we put that on the, no, we, no, no. Kimberly said, no, we wouldn't do it, but I, and not to override you, but, but we just have this tradition of sort of, things go away into the ether and.
No, no, and I, and I completely respect that. I'm so sorry, Mayor. I completely respect what the councilwoman is saying, and I was not meaning to say, we would not put it, I was just simply saying that it was, of course, a best practice, and I would expect that the next manager that you have would agree with me, because I'm sure you'll select someone fabulous and amazing, and then they would agree with me that that is absolutely a best practice when you onboard a new councilperson. But absolutely, whatever you want.
Councilperson or councilwoman or councilman, councilmen. Go ahead, Henry. Because you just said councilman a minute ago, and I, I mean, you correct me sometimes when I don't say the female part, so I'm just helping you out a little bit, Elizabeth.
In addition to that. Let me give you, let me give you something.
No, I'm laughing.
Well, it's okay.
Go ahead, sorry.
I think it's constructive.
Yes.
People that run for member of this council, in most cases, don't have any idea what it's about. They really don't.
Amen.
And I would just suggest, if there's anybody in this room, and anybody listening in, if you want to run against us, I suggest you get a hold of the sunshine law. There's a couple other laws that you should be familiar with, and just update yourself a little bit as to what you are expected in the future. And it may not take you a couple of years, maybe it'll only take you one year. I kind of think, it took me a year to understand everything that I was elected to do, truthfully. So if you are of the ilk that you want to run, I would suggest that you be informed, and you don't get knocked out of your seat real quick and say, boy, I can imagine this is what I ran for. Because this is a job. This is not kid stuff. This is a job. So I'm just making a comment for public information, that's all. I'm not defining it in any way.
Henry, what, what you're talking about, when I first got elected, I asked Kelly to give me the manual for in the sunshine, ethics and everything, and she, each one of us, five of us, got every book that she could give us that prepares.
Yeah, but you were already elected.
Sure. You should have it before you're elected.
That's correct.
A lot of, a lot of cities do that. They get, they get to look at comp plans and codes and all that beforehand.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet.
I just would like to make a comment that Henry's statement makes the case for staggered terms. He said, and I, I don't, I don't want to quote, but he said, you know, you don't really know what you're doing. I'll say it my way. When you get elected the first time, you don't know what you're doing, because you have, you don't have any experience. And if there's five brand-new freshman candidates who get elected, where's the experience? And that's the case for having a staggered term, where you have someone who's been here a year or three before. So, end of speech. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, so John, we can move on then. Kimberly, we're okay to move on?
Yep.
Off of that one? Okay, so the next one is B. Mark?
Yes?
You have three?
So if you all can remember way, way back to April, when we had an item on the agenda, it was a quasi-judicial item, where a gentleman came to us requesting a variance, and he had a home he was redoing on Carroll Street, and he was next door to a business, a motel, I guess. And so he was applying for a variance to reduce the side, the size of a buffer that was required under the code. And it's called a district boundary buffer. So when you have two, let's see if Henry's.
I'm sorry.
There we go.
I fixed it.
Happens to all of us. So, so when you have a residential district boundary, zoning boundary, let's call it, next to a commercial one, the code says there should be a buffer. And there, this is the one time I can recall, the only time I can recall, where I had a difference of opinion with the staff and the village attorney about this. And it, and it is rooted in my experience in having done, having encountered this many years ago, and then all through the period up until I was on the council the second time. And that is that the policy has been that we do not require a residential property owner to put a buffer on his or her property to protect him or herself from the commercial uses. It's the other way around. So that, we had a healthy discussion about that, and we, in fact, voted that that individual did not have to have a variance, because we shouldn't require him to have the buffer. But because the code has at best some ambiguity in it on that topic, I think, and there's more coming, and there's, there's some that are on B pass that are both ways. So for the purposes of clarity and consistency, I'm asking for the council to give direction to the planning staff to correct that in our code, such that when there is a district boundary buffer requirement, that the buffer is not required on the residential side, which is how we voted on it back in April.
Okay. Can, Jennifer, would you like to chime in on that? I mean, I know we talked about it in the briefing today, but that your staff will do that, take care of that, correct?
If that's direction from the council, we're happy to move forward. I would just ask that we get direction to make the actual code change to that effect, so that it's clear in the code moving forward. The one question, in speaking with staff, my staff earlier today, we wanted to clarify, would it be for all residential zoning districts or only certain residential zoning districts? Because certain residential zoning districts have different requirements, so we didn't know if, if it would be intended for all residential zoning districts.
I, I would just say, maybe you could give us a recommendation. So for example, if it's a zoning district where the minimum lot size is an acre or more, that's not quite as sensitive as it would be, say, where the minimum lot size is 4,500 square feet. That's just my personal opinion. I, I don't know if the other council members have a thought on that.
You know, I did have a thought on that, and, and it's funny that you brought this up, Mark, because after that vote, it sort of, that, after that April, was it, sounds like.
because after that vote, it sort of, that, after that April, was it, it seems like just yesterday, it sort of nagged at me, because what we're assuming is that the residential property is going to be less, less noisy or troublesome than the commercial property, which isn't necessarily the case. We've all, we've all have experienced, you know, that residential property that ends up, you know, turning into a 28-day vacation rental, and it's a party every single night. And so by saying you don't have to buffer the residential property, then, then you are now, you're imposing on the commercial guy who's trying to do whatever on his commercial property, run a five-star resort, which is the only thing that we have in Isla Marada, whatever that might be. So, and, and not only that, you know, for all our talk about habitat, like, you know, what we've, what we're seeing now are our houses being built as big as possible, which is great, which, well, I mean, it's fine. And, and the habitat goes away. And, and so now we're saying, and you don't have to keep this habitat next to your property, Mr. Residential Owner. So, so I think that this, so I want to disagree with you in the nicest of ways, but it, it concerns me. I mean, we, we continue to, to make decisions based on habitat. This keeps habitat on both sides, kind of keeps our, our, our culture, you know, this idea that we're a greener city than others in place. And, and it, and it, I'm just going to repeat myself, but I think what, what we're, we're sort of pretending that the resident is quieter and, you know, less, less impactful than the commercial guy, which isn't always the case. So I want to say no, I like it the way it is.
Anybody else, Vice Mayor?
No, I tend to agree with Elizabeth. I'm trying to figure out, trying to remember which, which people were involved here. I mean, what hotel or motel and what residence.
Skinny lot.
It was this long, narrow lot that ran from Carroll Street.
Is this the one that wants to build affordable housing on there?
No.
Oh, okay.
He had a, it was a remodel, and it was a, it was a nicer, older home. And I think he added a swimming pool, maybe, and some other square footage.
So by getting rid of the buffer, he's going to be able to build something? Is that basically what you're saying?
Well, he could just, he just doesn't, he could, he could. He could get closer to the property line with improvements, that's true.
Why would we get rid of the buffer? I mean, why would you want to do that?
I think he was right next door to maybe.
I thought it was a motel or a resort.
Caribbean Resort, yeah.
I know, I like the buffer.
That guy had a skinny property.
Yes.
As I recall.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't a normal, right.
But then, but then it's like, well, yeah, but, so you prop, you happen to buy a skinny property, but, you know, the buffers are still important.
So another thing is, I think Jennifer can confirm, if you, the typical buffer in that circumstance would be 20 feet wide, and it would be on both sides of the boundary. So it's not like it's only one. So the commercial guy does 20, the residential side does 20. But you can get a variance to reduce that, administrative variance to reduce that by 25%. So you can take that down to 15, is that right, Jennifer?
That's correct.
Yes. And so then you can get a variance to do like the other gentleman was asking for at that hearing. So, and then, of course, if you want to have a buffer because you like that, you can put it in, you can do whatever you want. I'm putting it on my property, I love it, it's great. But it's, it's just been the tradition or the custom or the practice or the policy, whichever one of those are all that you want to pick, that we, we've always viewed the commercial side as being more of a burden to the residential side. And I understand your position, if somebody had a noisy vacation rental, maybe, maybe that's an issue, too. But we, we voted it both ways, it's been decided both ways, as long as it's consistent, that's what I'm saying. And I, and I'm, I'm on the side of history, doing it the way it's been done for a long time.
Okay, so what if we were to do this, and Kimberly, you or John can chime in, Jennifer, what if we were to let, Mark, we let Jennifer bring this, because she just asked a pretty important question here, because different codes and different, you know, zones are, are different. So what if we let them bring back a recommendation to us?
Sure.
And then, you know, what the planning department's opinion is, and, and then we go from there. Are you okay with that?
If I have a third member of the council wanting me to do that, I have two people that don't want to change, and I have two people that would like a change, and I haven't heard from Councilman Rosenthal, so.
Swing vote, Henry.
I'd be glad to listen to you bring it back.
Yeah, I would, too, so.
All right, there you go, you got it.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean I disagree with you, it just means that I'm open-minded enough to listen.
So to be clear, Jennifer might come back and say, no, I like it the way it is.
She might, yeah. I'm just saying, let her, she, she's a professional. Let's let her bring back what her and her team want to bring back, and then we make a decision.
Just the options.
We will do that.
I, I just, for a point of interest, when this item came before us in, in April of last year, it was presented by the former Planning Director, Dan Galizio, and I had asked him, I went back and watched the tape on this, and I had asked him, is this normal? And if I remember correctly, his response was that requiring the district buffer on the residential side was, quote, "atypical." So he even thought that was maybe, I assumed he thought it was something not normal. So, there you go. I think, Jennifer, are you clear?
I am clear, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, so I guess we're going to move on to the, to the next one, which is me. John, can you and Kimberly help us out on this one? The composition of the LPA?
Sure, the, so as, as you all know, we, we have an LPA, Local Planning Agency. It's something that's required by state statute that, that certain, certain items have to go through the LPA before it gets to the, the council. The LPA is a recommending body. Ultimately, the council has final decision over any of the applications or proposed code changes that might go through the LPA. Currently, the LPA is staffed through appointed members, non-council member, or non-elected official members. My understanding that the, there was a discussion about potentially whether or not council would like to move to a, from an appointed LPA to the council serving as the LPA, which is absolutely permitted. There's nothing in the state statute that says who has to sit as the LPA. In fact, many, many governments throughout South Florida, the council sits as the LPA, and there's not a, not an appointed board. So when I say council, it would mean the five of you. And the way that works is you have usually what most cities who do that, they, they come in like an hour early, put on their, you know, open the LPA meeting, there's an LPA agenda, put on their LPA hats, hear everything on the LPA, and then close the LPA agenda, adjourn the LPA, move to the council meeting agenda, and then when those items come back up again, you're wearing your council hats, and then you, you hear it as a, as a council. So it would just require a code change as to the, the makeup or the composition of, of the LPA. Certainly something that, that our office could bring back, if that's something that the majority of the council would like to see.
Okay, Kimberly, can you fill us in a little bit, because the county does that with the land authority, right?
We absolutely do. So, you know, as, if anyone has watched a Board of County Commissioners meeting, they convene the county, the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and then at some point, they adjourn that meeting, they reconvene as the land authority, they do the business of the land authority, they understand that they're under different guidance. They even have, and don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure, they have a different attorney, I believe, during that time period. And then they reconvene, they adjourn that meeting, and they reconvene as the Board of County Commission. They also do something similar for the fire district, although during that time period, we also incorporate Leighton, because Leighton is in the fire district for the county, and so we include a representative from Leighton. And so they adjourn the Board of County Commission, they convene as the fire district board, they adjourn that, they make their decisions, they have an agenda, they go through the process, they adjourn that meeting, and then they reconvene as the Board of County Commission. And so it is absolutely permissible. Certainly, I don't think anybody would ever think that the Board of County Commission, under Bob Schillinger's guidance, was doing anything that wasn't completely legally responsible, so.
So, so after talking to you and John, I did a little homework myself and checked with several other cities and municipalities, and they do it the same way the county does it.
Yep.
Lots of them do, so. Counsel, I just put it on here for discussion, anybody like to, Elizabeth, you want?
My question is, what, what are you identifying that, that makes you want to change it? That's my question to you. Change the way we're functioning right now.
Right. What, what is my, my point? It's just a different way to do it, that the council would do it. We don't have to take the LP's opinion one way or another if we don't, but it's, Jennifer, I talked to Jennifer about it, how much more staff time this takes and everything else. So, you know, I'm, I'm, me personally, I was looking to simplify it, so. Vice Mayor Mahoney?
I'd like to, for Jennifer to, I'd like to see what it costs to have it done both ways, actually. I mean, is there, is it a big impact financially for the, there to be an LPA? You know, would it be more cost-effective for there not to be?
Well, there's always going to be the LPA, state statute.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, we're already here.
Right, the council or we appoint people, right.
I'd say, I mean, Jennifer can, can chime in. I mean, I'd say certainly with, with, there would be a, a third notice that's required to be advertised and posted, because if your LPA, if your LPA meeting and your first council reading is the same day, you know, you could do one posting, as opposed to certainly, obviously, the LP, the way it's set up now, you know, the LPA meets, say, in March, and then it'll be heard by the council in April, and then if it's a second reading, then it'll be heard again in May. So, I mean, I would, I certainly think that there's, obviously, there's staff time involved in that, and, and whatever the expense of advertising might be. But Jennifer could chime in a little more.
I mean, I don't have an exact number for you right now, obviously, but I can certainly do that research, but. So, yeah, there would be advertising costs that would be saved. There would also, we have currently a staff member who's an hourly staff member that gets paid to sit at LPA meetings, that I'm not necessarily sure would, depending how this makeup, if somebody, if Marnie was here already for your meetings, we wouldn't need, you know, that staff member's time. You know, and then I could look back and see, you know, as far as, you know, my time, how much that take, how long that takes, and I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you that. But it would be a cost savings, I would imagine.
Okay, go ahead, I was going to say.
Just a note, in addition, there's an efficiency aspect, obviously. When the LPA meets and then moves things forward from their agenda to yours, there's a time delay. If you were doing that all in the same meeting, or as John said, same meeting like the county does, or, as John recommended, a meeting right before your meeting, you're ruling those things right into your, into your meeting. And so there's certainly an efficiency aspect to moving things along.
Henry, you a comment on?
Well, the expense is number one, I guess. Being informative is equally important. I mean, I watch the LPA, I learn what's expected coming down the road. A lot of times, things that I had no idea about, but the LPA did. I don't know how functional they are in respect to our decisions. I just don't know that. I mean, I watch it, and on occasion, things come up that I've never seen before. And it's, they're not new to me when it comes here, so. I'm very much in favor of reducing government, I really am. I've said it over and over, the worst thing about government is government. And if I can reduce government, along with the expense, but just reducing government and committees and this and that, and boom, 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 that's a major objective mine. But is it costing us? Is it costing us to make the right decisions? Because we have seven members with their opinion, and they're not the same members in the audience. They don't show up here, with the exception of the chairman of the LPA, in most cases. There's a lot to weigh on this decision, there is. The financial, I, I don't know if the financial is that important. I think it's the information that's the important thing, truthfully. I mean, I'm all for reducing costs, there's no question about that. But are we short, shortening ourselves in order to save money? Or are we shorting ourselves as to the information? So I'm kind of in the middle. So, that's it, thank you.
Mark? I have a, an experience, I have a unique experience that I've already lived this method of doing things, and I wanted to tell you what it was like. And it was, it has both pros and cons, having done it the way we're doing it here. So when I was elected to the council the first time in the year 2000, it was, as Buddy is suggesting, the council served as the LPA, there were five members. And so, for example, a night like this, we would show up at 4 o'clock, we would sit in the same chairs, the clerk would have different name tags, we would be LPA members, not council members, and mayor and so forth. And we would review the agenda, we would move through it rapidly in most cases. It was very nimble, very efficient, very fast. And it was by necessity, for the reason that we had inherited the county's land use plan and the county's land development regulations and code, and we desperately wanted our own. And we were busting at the seams to get that done. So we probably had, and I'm going to guess, 50 meetings. And I, I know how the Vice Mayor loves the meetings that we have and all of our schedules. If you like coming twice a month now, that, if we're going to rewrite the code in the future and rewrite the land development regulations, it's a pretty big chunk to bite out, you know? It's, it's a lot of work. I loved it, I had a great time, I learned a lot. So on the, as, as the manager pointed out, Kimberly said, it's efficient, that is true. It was very efficient, and it moved very rapidly. And we got a lot of stuff done, and so between early 2000 and the early part of 2001, we rewrote the entire village land development regulations, the code, and the comprehensive land use plan, including the data and analysis section. It was a stack of paper about that tall, and I was very proud to participate in that. I'm not going to lie to you and tell you I sat home and wrote all that stuff out. The staff did all that, and then they presented it to us, and then we hashed it all out. But it was a great process, and it worked great. Here's the downside. The downside to me is that one of the functions of the LPA is to serve as, my word is, as a shock absorber for the county, for the council. In other words, I love to sit home in the quiet of my little office and turn on the TV or the computer, and I watch the LPA. Sometimes I think to myself, boy, I'm glad I'm not there and have to deal with this, because this is, this is rough, you know, or, or it's, it's not rough, or whatever. But it gives you, gives us a first look, and then usually it's a few weeks before we have it, come before us, and there's some time to think about it, and there's some time to take some questions and gather information and study on the matter. That doesn't happen in the way that we're talking about changing it to, because it's literally, you, 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 you close the meeting on the LPA, you might have a short break, the clerk runs around and changes all the name tags, and then you do the pledge and get going on the regular meeting. I mean, it's, it's really fast. You don't have that time for reflection, you don't get a chance to call people and ask questions or go look at things. So that's the downside, number one. And number two is, I think, for the reason that we have committees, is that we're seeking the input of the public, and there's a public participation function to that. And I very much value the folks that sit on the LPA, who have a variety of backgrounds and experiences, and they bring something that we don't have. And sometimes, I think many times, more, more often than not, we have a better result because of that outside information, so to speak, rather than us in our own little cocoon. So I'm not saying one is better than the other, I'm just saying, in the case where we were trying to get our land development regulations and comp plan together quickly, it was a great thing to do, and it worked great. The way we're doing things now, I think it works pretty good now, but if we're going to undertake to rewrite everything or update it, and we need to move quickly and be. undertake to rewrite everything, or update it, and we need to move quickly and be nimble and efficient, then it makes sense to change it. I'm just sharing that with you, so, if you want to bring something back and we can look at it, I'm okay with that, too.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, you know, um, I wonder if one of the, again, I'm a little unclear, but, well, what I have noticed is that the LP's, um, there's an impression that it slows the process down, and I wonder if there's some improvements that can be made within, within that committee for how it actually functions. I mean, I know that sometimes they miss meetings because there's no quorum. I mean, that, like, that's kind of a drag for everybody, I don't know how you can change that, or, um, and, and, I mean, I completely respect the volunteerism that happens there because I learn a lot from watching them, I agree with, I like the shock absorber, um, example that you gave, Mark, because it allows me to learn a lot about what we are gonna vote on, but, but they also, like, sometimes they send issues back to Jennifer, and that's not, I don't think that's the role, and I don't know, maybe John can comment on that. There might be some improvements with the way that group functions to make it more efficient so that it, and, and, God, it sounds like I'm being critical of that group, which I'm not trying to be, um, but I wonder if there's some improvements that can be made just within the function of how that group functions. Maybe Jennifer has a comment, or, to, to make it more palatable for us. Uh, and, did I just mention that I didn't mean to sound like I was being critical of that group, 'cause they do a great job, and what I'm glad I'm not doing.
Yeah, I would say, you know, we had an orientation with the, with the LPA, um, I guess it was two, two meetings ago, where we just sat, we just sat down and went through kind of the expectations of the LPA, uh, to make sure that everybody understood, uh, the LPA's role, um, in the important role that the LPA plays, um, in, um, moving forward and, and revising, addressing, uh, different issues, uh, related to, um, uh, land development issues. Um, and I think, and part of that was, um, to avoid, I think, some of the, the items that we saw, um, a couple of years ago, where items would be brought back three, four times, and, and as opposed to them being moved forward to the council, and I, I think part of, part of the, the, that is, you know, Jennifer's also, you know, moving things forward, too, and not kind of, you know, kind of going through that cycle, uh, of just, you know, kind of staying there. Um, but yes, that's something that we are, uh, I think we've addressed and, and where we will continue to, uh, work with the LPA to make sure that it's, uh, um, that their important role in the process, uh, is also making sure that their, their knowledge and insight makes its way to the council, uh, in the most effective and efficient way possible.
Buddy?
Okay. Go ahead, Henry.
The benefit to the LPA is not only a benefit to us, it's a benefit to the applicants. Because on many occasions, the attorneys will sit there and make a presentation and understand it's not going so good, and they'll back away, come back another time with a different type of presentation. So, that saves us for all that nonsense. I've been here long enough, well, well, before the LPA, the county commission, in a sense of the word, was an LPA. They were under the committee system. And the committee system was, they basically got together and discussed the agenda, made up the mind which way they're gonna go, they had the meeting, went to lunch, and never came back. That's the way it was. They talked about it prior to the meeting, it's like the LPA. Came for a consensus, called the meeting to order, boom, boom. Seriously, went to lunch and they didn't come back. So, there was an LPA, in a sense of the word. I think what you're doing is, you're agreeing with me that the information is more important than how much it costs. I think you are. That's what I said. So, with that, that's, I'm done.
So, Kimberly, where do we, uh, how would we direct Jennifer to come back with us on some of this?
Um, I think Jennifer has definitely gotten a sense of where you all are at, and if that's what you would like to do, rather than make a motion or a vote, then we can have Jennifer look at it over the next month and come back to the next meeting with some recommendations of the various different ways that we could do it.
Yeah. Well, what's the will of the council right now? What, how, do we want to have Jennifer do that, or do we want to make a vote on it?
I think it's a discussion item, I'm not sure.
It is a discussion.
Can we vote?
It is a discussion, yes.
I think she should, I think she should, uh, come back with, A, like Elizabeth said, the way to, um, change the way they do stuff so it's not ours, and maybe better, smoother system, and also, I'd like to see the financial thing, so I think we need to see, think about it a little more and see the benefits, the pros and the cons, 'cause I'm just now hearing all this stuff, and it's making me think, so.
Yeah. So.
Buddy, Buddy, what are you, excuse me.
No.
What are you looking for? Some kind of a motion and a vote?
No, I mean, I just, when it, when it came time, I wasn't sure if we needed that with John, that, to, to move forward, but if Jennifer's willing to do that, that's, I, I want to see, I want to know more about it, Mark.
Sure, I, I, I think more information makes a better decision, so I'm good for that.
So, my, so my takeaway is that we're gonna have Jennifer go back, and what I want to do is give staff a little bit of empowerment here, that I know she's extremely busy, you've given her several takeaways of things she needs to do. I'm going to say, I, I don't want to commit her to bringing this back next month, but it will definitely be on her after action, and she will bring it back in the next couple of months, and she'll come back with "do nothing" to the other end of the spectrum and the various information that you've given her that you would like, as far as money, resources, et cetera. Does that sound good?
Sounds good to me. Henry?
All right.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Elizabeth? Okay.
Perfect.
We're good.
Thank you.
We can move on now. How about the consent agenda? And hey, John, just, because Van just said that we're, uh, this is just a mayor-council communication, and we don't, there's.
Correct, there's, yeah, and, and before you get to consent, there is one, uh, village manager communication, um, under tab five, related to the, uh, billboard on Winley Key.
Okay. All right, Peter.
Good evening, council. So, as you're likely aware, there's a billboard on Winley Key that's on the village-owned Winley Point community property. Uh, when the village acquired that property, that was in 2012, for the Habitat for Humanity project, the village assumed the role of lesser, of a lease, which was established on that property by the former owner. Uh, that lease, which is, has been provided in your council packet, that is with Outfront Media Corporation. It allows Outfront Media to operate and maintain that billboard on a portion of the property and the associated signage that goes along with that billboard. So, the term of the, it's actually the sec, second term of this lease is due to expire at the end of July. Uh, the village does have the ability to terminate this lease with written notice, ninety-day written notice to Outfront Media. Uh, the reason we're bringing this up is, uh, it's become an issue, we've had some complaints from residents. Uh, there's also an issue with the trees, that's why I'm presenting this. Uh, the village did complete a planting project in the right-of-way a few years ago. Uh, the plant grew up very nicely, but their maintenance crew is trimming those trees, uh, we believe, to get a better view of the billboard, so the residents aren't really happy with that. There was a really nice mastic tree, uh, removed there as well. So, uh, staff are gonna look for a recommendation from council to terminate this lease. Uh, if we did do that and the billboard was removed, we would go ahead and do a, complete a planting project, a native planting project in this area. We think that'd be more aesthetically pleasing, uh, for the residents there, as, as well as those traveling along US One. So, we're looking for direction on this, and staff is recommending, uh, termination of this lease.
Okay, go ahead, Henry.
Very quickly, I move to terminate the lease.
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, we got a, any other discussion? Okay, all right, we got a motion in a second.
Just open up.
And we gotta have public comment, if we're gonna do that. Okay. Peter, thank you. Uh, we're gonna open public comment for this. Any takers, Marnie?
Um, I don't believe I have anyone signed up for this.
Okay, all right, so, public comment's now closed. Marnie, would you, uh, call the roll? We got a motion in a second.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Peter. All right, so, John, can we now move to the?
Mr. Mayor, I just was gonna make an announcement.
Okay, sure.
Um, I just wanted to announce to the, um, public and everybody watching at home that next Thursday, February twenty-second, the planning department is hosting a noise ordinance workshop here in this bill, in this room, from five PM to eight PM. If anybody's interested in attending, you're welcome to do so. We'll also be accepting comments on our noise ordinance workshop, or any suggestions for modifications via email. Um, there's some forms over there with the contact information, and we're also gonna post this on our website, where you can contact, um, a planner in my office with that information, so, just wanted to announce that publicly.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. Okay, so, let's see here, and now, we are going to move on to the consent agenda.
So, um, we're into the.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, village, I'm sorry, John. How about the?
Yeah, we're in.
Oh, that's all right, you did that, we did that, okay, yep. So, the consent agenda.
Yeah, we're into the consent agenda, consent portion of the agenda. These items are of a routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are items, uh, tabs six through ten. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to do it individually.
Henry, can you explain what you?
Yes, I, I, item B, I believe, is under consent agenda. I don't see any competitive building, competitive bidding.
What tab are you on, Henry?
Tab seven.
Seven.
Tab seven? Okay.
Councilman, Councilman Rosenthal, do you want to pull all of the items from, from the consent agenda, or just tab seven?
I have more.
Okay.
I'm starting with that one, as we go down the line, and, and it's noted, I have comments.
Okay, so, we need to know for the record which items, if they're all, that's absolutely fine, that's totally right, we just need to know which items you're going to pull. Um, for example, if it's not A, then we would.
I just want to have the opportunity to discuss it.
Correct, totally understood, and so, we just need to know exactly which items you'd like to pull, and then we'll take a vote on the ones that remain.
Yes.
So, are, are you saying you want to keep everything on consent, but you want to be able to provide comments before the vote?
Yes.
Okay, got it, I, I, I understood, okay, got it.
Okay, well, how, how many tabs, Henry, are you talking about?
Well, it's, they're all, so, they're all staying on consent, um, tabs, what is it, six through ten? Um, Councilmember Rosenthal just wanted to address them before, comment on them before the vote.
Okay.
All right.
So, go ahead, start, we might as well go on seven, then.
John, you usually, you usually talk about each one, so, my first one is tab seven. I'm interested in competitive bidding, and I, I don't see anything here that suggests we had competitive bidding.
Okay, come on.
Well, it's probably gonna be easiest if we pull these, then, from consent, if we're gonna have presentations and, and everything, too. I think it would be best if we pull whichever items they are.
Okay, so, Henry, let's just pull the ones that you want to discuss, and then we'll go ahead and vote on the consent, and then we'll come back to, to those.
You want, you have something to say on all of them, right?
Quite a few.
Well, he didn't, he didn't say all of them, he said quite a few.
Councilman Rosenthal, can you tell us which tabs you'd like to pull? And we will absolutely pull them, and then we'll vote on those you don't pull.
Not looking to pull them, I'm looking to talk about them.
I know, but we gotta.
Totally understand, absolutely, and that's what we're gonna do, we're just gonna hold them so we can talk about them, the things, the items that you don't, so, for example, tab six, the minute, the minutes, if that's not one that you would like to hold, then we need to vote on it.
This, by the way, is okay with me.
Okay.
Okay.
So, he.
How about, and tab seven you'd like to hold? How about tab eight?
Looking, I'm looking for there to be bid on in tab.
Yes, and we will definitely discuss that at length, as you choose. Tab eight, which is the breakwater?
Seems to be, can, the amount of money acquainted with tab eight is enormous.
Okay, so you'd like to.
We've got a concept design for thirty-nine thousand, then we have a design for thirty-five thousand, and then we have a hundred and one thousand, and another thirty-four thousand just for somebody to oversee it.
Correct, so you, so you'd like to hold tab eight and discuss?
That's correct.
Okay. How about tab nine? That would be the creation of a legislative agenda and a strategic plan, agenda? Would you like to hold that item?
I would like to speak to that, because a year ago, I brought it up, and we went to the legislature, and we didn't have anything to talk about with anybody. You know what it was? It was an opportunity to take pictures. That's what it was.
Hey, Henry, I just talked to, to Ryan in Tallahassee, he, he's willing to help us to come up, and that's what John was drafting this for, is so that we can have some, so we do have a process that's more, more like the county.
But you know what the county brings?
They bring a book.
Yes, that thing.
And, and they might have seventeen to twenty meetings, I'm very, very.
That's right. How many meetings did we have when you guys went up there?
I, I didn't go to the Florida Keys days.
You didn't go?
No.
Well, you went, didn't you?
So.
You did.
So, if we may, I'd prefer not to.
I don't, I don't mean to be.
We, we had.
Argumentative.
Well, I, I would say, uh, complimentary to the village manager and the village attorney and lobbyist, we had a list of the different individuals that we met with. Some were legislators, some were department heads, some were not department heads, but upper in there, and we went to each office and we sat with them, and we told them what we wanted to do and what our issues were.
And you were never told, we only have a few minutes to speak, whatever it was.
I think we were in some of them, we were in their office a half an hour.
Okay.
I sat right next to the head of the Department of Insurance and talked all about windstorm. I mean.
Councilmen, councilmen, respectfully, we will absolutely pull this item and we can discuss it at length, but right now, we're out of order, and so, I just want to get us back in order. Respect, respectfully, so, um, I understand you want to pull tab nine. Absolutely. Tab ten is the wastewater. Would you like to pull that item?
No.
No, okay, so, right now, what I have is that we're gonna vote on the consent agenda.
Six and ten.
A, and E, six, and ten.
Yep.
So.
I'll thank you for your indulgence.
Madam Clerk?
I'll move for approval for item six and ten on the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Marnie, call the roll.
Councilman.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna. Okay, public comment? Anybody want to speak on public comment? Go ahead, Van.
No one signed up for tab six and ten.
What's that?
No one signed up for those two tabs.
Okay, for tab six and ten? Okay. All right, Van, we're gonna come back to these other, seven, eight, nine, and, uh, you can, if you want to speak on any of those, you can. Okay, so, public comment is now closed. Marnie, would you call the roll, please, for tab six and ten?
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so, just so, um, in, in terms of where we are in the agenda, if you all remember, we, um, tab nineteen was moved up to immediately after the consent agenda, so we are on to tab nineteen right now, and then after that, we will move into the resolutions, which is, and we will start with tab seven and work our, and work our way through. So, we're on, we're on to tab nineteen, as that one was moved up immediately after consent.
Correct. Okay.
Everybody's looking at me.
We're not looking at you. Henry, you, you can start it off if you want.
My move is because I think it's one of the most important things on the agenda this evening, without a doubt. I know it wasn't done on purpose, but to have it so late in the meeting, that everybody's not here, a few people left already, and they should be a part of this discussion, so that's the reason I moved it up, so we can get more public comment and see where we're gonna go with it. That's my main objective, and, uh, I think Mark had a little something to do with the That's my main objective, and I think Mark had a little something to do with the decision, so, I'll turn over my time to Mark, if you like.
Thank you. Just so the folks watching at home or in the audience know what we're talking about, I had asked the staff and the village attorney to place an item on the agenda for reconsideration of our vote of the village manager that was held on January the 2nd. We voted three to two not to hire Mr. Robert Cole, who was one of the applicants there, and I think in, perhaps in a somewhat confusing manner, I had made a statement that he was my favorite or my preferred candidate, yet I voted against appointing him as our, or seeking him as our, selecting him as a manager. And the reason that I did that is because I have to look across the dais at all of the council members, but in particular, the mayor and the vice mayor, who I, from our discussion, I knew they were not in favor of that. So, I'd also said that I was very much in favor of us having a unanimous vote, because we're hiring a manager, and it would be a vote of confidence for him to come in with a 5-0 vote, knowing that we wanted him to get off, get his start off as a manager on the right foot with our full support. So, that's why I did what I did on January the 22nd. What has occurred since then is an overwhelming amount of input that I have received from members of the public, from other public officials here in Monroe County, when I was in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago, from staff members, from just people on the street. The summary of the comments that I got was that we made a mistake, and we look bad, and we need to move forward and hire a manager. We had a manager, a full-time manager last, in October, or, excuse me, in August, it's been over six months, and we've agreed to a process, we've gone through the process, this is the end of the process, and it's time to make a decision. But I still feel a sense of respect for the relationship that we've built since we've kind of had a falling out there back when Ted left, and we've worked hard since then to come back, and we've been doing very well the last several months, and for me to want to move forward with something that I know is not going, may not be a 5-0 vote, is very difficult. And the reason that I think that it is important to do that is because it's not about me and what I want, and it is about the council, but it's about the people that put us in these chairs to do our job, to fulfill our duty, and to lead the community forward, and to make an important decision. And sometimes you have to make a decision where you know some people are gonna be unhappy, and I feel that this could be that time. But I am very hopeful and optimistic that we can avoid that, if we can just work through this a little bit. I want to tell you a little story about something you may not know about the village manager, and that would be the very first village manager we ever had back in 1998. So, anybody remember his name? Jim Chisholm. Jim Chisholm, thank you. Jim Chisholm started out, you know, remember, we incorporated the last day of 97, and so, the good news is, we were a new village, the bad news is, we had no place to meet, we had no staff, we had no attorney, we had no offices, no phone number, no land use plan, we had nothing. We had to start literally from scratch, and my hat's off to the five original council members who did that. And then, they had to select a manager, and they did that, if I recall correctly, late in the year of 1998, and they selected Jim Chisholm. He came and he, he worked hard to get us organized, he got us going, and he lasted about nine months, and I cannot tell you why he left, I don't know if he felt that he wasn't, he wasn't happy, he wasn't a good fit, I don't know, but he left under what I thought were acceptable terms. And, you know, I can, I can understand why you might feel some reluctance in picking someone, and you're not really sure about how they're gonna do, but Jim Chisholm's story begins after he left the village, and when he left here, he went to work as the city manager, and I want to say it was in Daytona, or Daytona Beach, or somewhere in the Daytona area, and I've learned that he just recently retired after serving about 25 years there, with all the accolades and awards and complimentary things that you can think of for a manager to last that long. And I'm telling you that story because sometimes they might not work well in some places, and they work well in others, but you'll never know until you give them a chance, and that's what I'm asking us to do. And we've waited, we've, we've, we've talked about this, we've, I've lost sleep over it, I've wrung my hands about it, I think this is my fifth manager that I'm gonna get to pick, and so, I feel it's time for us to move forward, and if, if there's a majority of us that want to do that, I'm asking the minority of those of you who don't want to do this, to try to look forward to where we're going, and try to look at what we're doing, which is to put somebody in the most important seat in the village government in the executive office, and how important it is to get him started on the right track with our full support and our full confidence that he can do the best job that he can to help us all move forward. And it's not like putting a man on the moon, but it is a small step for the village council, but a giant leap forward for the whole village of Isle Marotta. And that's what I would like to do here tonight, and I'm gonna make a motion that we reconsider our vote for hiring Robert Cole, and I wanted to see if we can do that and talk about that a little further.
I'll second it.
So, if you want to talk about it further, just a friendly suggestion that it's a motion to reconsider the vote on Robert Cole, and to waive the council procedures to allow consideration for it today.
I also wanted to waive the council procedures and policies so that we could have the vote if we so decided, and if it was the will of the council, to select Robert Cole as our next village manager, and then to provide instruction to the staff to begin the process of drafting an employment contract and negotiating for that.
And a motion?
That's the motion.
And I'll second it.
And, and just so everybody's, so this is, it's gonna be a two-step, right now, it's the motion for reconsideration that will be voted on, and if the majority of the council vote to approve the reconsideration, then there will be a second motion, or if, if the council wants to authorize negotiation with Mr. Cole, it would require a second motion for that, and that one would, would require a public comment as well.
Let's have some, anybody have any comment?
Yeah, I do. For someone who stood so strong on your opinion, one has to wonder why the switch, because, trust me, I've been wondering a lot. I liked Robert Cole a lot. I like the thought of, of having a assistant manager, and I'd be willing to go along with everybody else if we could bring him in as assistant manager to the woman we have, who I think is more than capable for 60 days to see. I think, like I've said before, and I know you don't agree with me, and I guess now these two don't, which doesn't really matter to me, because if I can test drive a car before I buy it, I'm gonna test drive it, and I have my questions about certain things, and I don't see the harm, and if he's the one who brought up the thought of being the assistant, not us, he approached us. So, to me, that shows me, by email to all of us, and that shows me that he's willing, so I'll go along with everybody if we can start him off to see, because what I'm not gonna do is go on the merry-go-round that we've been on with the last two managers, and that some of you guys picked, and I'm sorry, but you did, so I'm a little gun-shy, and I just am, and I just think to keep Kimberly is a good move, I do, for now, she can work with the gentleman, we can see what he's like, and I don't think there's anything wrong with giving him a 60 days, and if we like him, which we may love the man, because she is not gonna stay, we all know that, and so, we may love the man, but at least I'll go into the vote in 60 days knowing that another year from now, we're not gonna be, well, it won't be a year, but whenever the contract comes up, that we're gonna say, no, no, here we go again, so, that's my opinion, so. Anybody else?
I'll throw my opinion in, too, because I, I believe, I'm gonna say the same thing that Sharon said, okay? I mean, we, we made a vote, okay? And, and Mark, you said it yourself, if we don't have a 5-0, then, and, you know, it was a 3-2, and I don't, I don't know what somebody said to you, or what you, what you came up with, that you thought this, but I know that I have talked to the county commissioners about Kimberly, I've talked to Roman about Kimberly, and Kimberly's been here for seven years in the Keys. Before this, she was in Miami with the Miami-Dade library system, all right? She's the head strategic planner. I'm honored that they, that, that her husband Dave and the county let us have her on loan for right now, and I think to bring somebody in from New York, that Mr., you know, from Illinois first, and then Scarsboro, New York, I personally, I like the thing where he did, he sent an email in that, as, to let him be a deputy director, or like an assistant manager, so, for me, I wouldn't mind doing that, especially while we have Kimberly, all right? And you know what? If Mr. Cole is everything, and he's over the top, and he works good with staff and everything, I don't have a problem, and we'd have to bring it back and vote on it at that time, but, so, that's my two cents worth, you know? I mean, look, Mr. Orvick came down, I mean, I went up there, he came down here, you know, everything, and then all of a sudden, in January, we get a letter from him, or he called me first and said, hey, I'm resigning, all right? And then Ted, you know, Ted's gonna be here, and all, everything, so, it's, it's, so I've been a little gun-shy myself on people that, you know, but the fact of the matter, right now, we have somebody that is from Monroe County, she's been here seven years, and she's done an extremely good job for the county, so, if we can move to bring a deputy director or deputy of village manager, I mean, assistant manager, I could be on board with that.
I, I cannot disagree with what you said, especially with regard to Kimberly. She has been a lifesaver for us, and she's done an excellent job in getting us forward, and I will tell you that before she even stepped in here to work for us, I called her and asked her if she would take the job full-time, and I've asked her that a few times. I'm happy to do that, but she has another job somewhere else that she loves, and a wonderful place to live, and a life, and she has graced us with her experience and professionalism, and gotten us along this far, and I, I'm telling you in public, face-to-face, how grateful I am and appreciative I am that you have done that, and I would love to have you as our manager, but that can't be, so, to do something, she, you know, if we do what you, the mayor and the vice mayor want to do, we will have her for a month or two more, maybe three, but we're gonna be right back where we're at right now, trying to make a final decision to pick a manager. Do we take Mr. Cole as a deputy and move him up, or not?
He suggested that himself, Mark.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but the reality is, you never know what they're gonna do until they're sitting in the chair and doing the job, and if we don't like him, if he's the manager, and we hire him as the manager, we don't like him, we can let him go, just like anybody else. But, I just, I see, I see your feelings and your logic about doing, we'll call it a test drive, or however you want to say that, there is some logic to that, but I think the public and our staff are expecting us to stand up and lead and make a final decision and start moving forward. There will always be some doubt if we just start out in the, with Mr. Cole in the number two position, and that, to me, I don't think that's why we're sitting here. We're, we're put here to make a hard decision, and we should do it, we should do it.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem myself that we, we had the three come here, you know what? And I, I didn't feel comfortable, okay, after interviewing all three of them, so guess what? I didn't, I decided not to vote on any of them, okay? There was only three that came, so, anyways, it's, you know, we can, hey, we can, we can agree, Mark, that we all see through a different eye lens, okay? You look at it different, I'm not, okay? I, the people put me in office to make a decision, they put you in office, they put Elizabeth, they put the vice mayor, they put Henry in office, okay? So, I feel like that we do, that we do have somebody, and you know what? He might not like it in 60 days, okay? Could be.
He'll let us know.
What if, you know, yeah, so, so then, okay, so let's say we go do it, we vote him in, and he doesn't like it 60 or 90 days, or we do, maybe we don't like him. We do an evaluation, because I want to do an evaluation now with a new manager 60 days, or not over 90 days.
We can do that.
So, so, hold on one second, so, so, you know, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with making somebody a deputy assistant manager for 60 or 90 days, and if, you know what, if this, if Mr. Cole is everything that we want and our staff, I have no problem voting for him, but I, I would, I would at least know that, and our staff would have a chance to work with him, Kimberly'd have a chance to work with him, and then we go from there. So, you know, I'm just gonna say, it's okay that we disagree, that I disagree, I'm speaking for myself now, so, anyways.
I mentioned earlier that I have agonized over having the conversation that we're having right now, and I'm looking in your eyes, and I see the look of disappointment that, of my suggestion, and I, I cannot make a decision that, that is not in the best interest, what I believe in my heart and my mind, that is in the best interest of the village. Your idea is not a bad one, I just think hiring a manager, as a permanent manager, is a better one, and you disagree, and I see your shaking head, and I-
Can I ask a question? Okay?
She's dying to talk.
Okay, go ahead, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Why, thank you. Mark, I appreciate you bringing this back, and it's big of you, and, and, and I, what I'm hearing us all say is that this is, there's nothing personal here, it's just where we are coming, we're all coming from a different place into this conversation. I would comment that when we were in Tallahassee, I, too, felt a very strong message from our, our Keys elected officials that, that what's happening here is, has gotta stop, and, and actually, I was a little, I was very uncomfortable with that, because I like to think that we're trying to do the best that we're doing, and, and that message was loud and clear to me. Yeah, there are two comments I wanted to make. One is that we have the ability to create a contract with a new manager that builds into it a healthy and robust review process. We can review at 30, 60, 90 days to talk about improvements that can be made, what are we seeing? I mean, that is something that we can work, work on contractually, to help this person fit into our culture, and it's something that we should consider. I talked to Kimberly today about what it would look like for us to hire Mr. Cole as a manager, and have her stay on for 30 days to train, assist, do an onboarding that is professional and reasonable, so that he's not thrown in, you know, into cold water. She seemed to be amenable to that, and, and, and the reality is, you know, we're talking about her, this person, like, like, like she's, like, like, it's, like we have the opportunity to keep her, we don't, she is going back to her job, and so, just, right, so-
I know that, because I've talked to the mayor.
So, just, just, just to go back, we have the opportunity for her to help train this person into, into success, and then, finally, I think that we need to think about the role that we play in welcoming this person onboard, and, and also helping to create a successful environment for him to succeed in, and, and I don't know who can initiate, probably, I don't know, Kimberly can probably help us with that, but, but really, I, I don't want to see this person come in, in a secondary position, as, I mean, this man is, is coming, is asking to be hired, is appealing to us to work at, at an executive level, and people at that level, I mean, he is, there's an understanding, I think, of that, of a position, he's coming, he's committing, he's uprooting his life, and, you know, I, I have all the confidence that, that he is sincere in his intention to work hard and make this successful, and, and I certainly am, am as well, to assist this person- this person in, in making success, but, but not at, not at a sub-level.
Okay, so Elizabeth, how long has he been a manager? Can you answer that question? I asked Mark today, because Mark thought his 19 years, he was the manager. I don't think that's correct from the information I read. And when I interviewed him, he was, I don't believe he was the manager in his Illinois position.
So his resume indicated that he, in his, his last job was as a manager, and then what happened-
Can you answer how long that was?
I think it was about a year. And he is 19 years as an assistant to the manager, which says to me that he understands, I mean, if he can stay employed his 19, for 19 years in a government system, you know, there's an indication that, that there is some stick-to-it-ness there. I mean, I guess, you know, alternatively, are you suggesting we start the process again? I mean, what, what is your alternative?
No, I said, if we want to hire him as a deputy assistant, which he offered, I have the email that came to me about that, okay? And just so, let me clear one thing up about Kimberly. Kimberly has told me all along, okay, she's been flat-out honest, that the, the contract between the village and the county, and it's her bosses, meaning, i.e. Roman and the county commission, she never said that she was here to stay, okay? She's never said that to me at all, that she, it depends upon what her bosses were saying. So I think we all knew, I knew from the very beginning that she wasn't coming here to stay, she was just trying to help us get through this transition period. And if Mr. Cole hadn't offered as a deputy, I wouldn't even be saying, you know, he said, let me start somewhere. We all got the email. So, you know, you guys, I'm only one of five, so it doesn't, you guys can look at it, and we all see through a different eye lens, and we'll, we'll go from there. And, and the vice mayor brought up this Robert Haff about that is an international agency, you know, and 30 days have gone by, and, you know, we, we haven't been able, we didn't, we couldn't, you know, she actually talked to him, they were in touch with Kimberly, but, you know, there's another avenue that, that is out there. So anyways, no big deal. Go, you guys, anybody else want to?
I'd just like to say that I, I think that we are, in substance, agreeing on the same thing. It is a form. It is the form of how we do it. So if we decide to have Mr. Cole serve as our manager, we can build in, as Elizabeth was suggesting, provisions in the contract where, on a short-term basis, for review, for evaluation, if it doesn't work out, then we part company. It's, it's in substance, the same thing as what the mayor and the vice mayor are saying.
How is it the same thing?
Because if you, if we have him come in at a, he, he won't be functioning at a, at a manager level, he will be at the deputy manager or the assistant manager level. And for whatever reason, if you decide you don't want him in 30, 60, 90 days, he can be gone. The timeframe is the same, and the result is the same. If he doesn't work out, he's gone. But the form is different, and I think it's important for, for getting him going in the right direction from the very beginning, that he starts at the top, where we advertise for that, we've been interviewing for that, that is the opening there. If I hadn't opened my fat mouth at the last meeting and talked about an assistant manager, we wouldn't even be talking about that. So-
Well, Mark, one thing is, you and Kimberly both said, when you were in Tallahassee, that you got pressure from other elected officials. I find it interesting. I know all five of them, four of them extremely well. I actually talked to the mayor yesterday, who actually told me that when we voted and if people had an issue, that we didn't vote, we didn't choose one of them. You know, she actually was commented that, hey, you, you made your decision, but the county commission doesn't tell me what to do, and I don't tell them what to do, and the residents of Alamoata voted me in office. So that's who I am, I would look to. And I've not had one resident call me-
Me either.
Okay? And tell me, man, you guys did a bad job, you really screwed up.
I did. I heard from several of them. I mean, a lot of them.
Me too.
And it was unanimous.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just saying, it, it, it's, I respect all the county commission, and I, I told Kimberly, I called Holly and had a long talk with, with the mayor yesterday. Okay? So anyways, I'm finished.
So I, I don't know if any more conversation is gonna change anybody's opinion.
No.
Can I make a comment? I wrote the last couple of contracts. I think I'm writing this one, unless you changed your mind from a few meetings ago. I don't have to do it. If I do do it, tell me what you want. Seriously. There's a bill in the House and there's a bill in the Senate. I meant to bring the numbers with me, but I reviewed it before I came. The bills are, eight months before the election, if it passes in both houses, we will not have the opportunity to sign a contract with the manager or the attorney. It's there. It's being discussed. Now, that doesn't mean we make a bad decision in order to comply with what's going on. Don't misunderstand me. But I just want to bring it up to the table, that it's being discussed by the end of this month. Providing it passes in both houses, we will not have the opportunity to make a contract with the manager or with an attorney. I don't want that to be the process of us making your decision, but I'm just bringing you up for your information. I've employed, boy, I get- Somebody very important to me has said you shouldn't say what you've done and who you are, et cetera, et cetera. But in this particular case, I've probably employed more people, well, I did employ more people, for 25 years, anybody outside of the Sheriff's Department and a few other agencies, I employed more people for 25 years in this county. I've made mistakes. No question about it. And if I were to go along with Mr. Cole, there's a possibility I'm making a mistake. But I will not know that I've made a mistake until the time comes. Real simple. There's no way you can say, I'm sure of what I'm, what I'm thinking. It's impossible. So when the time comes, you'll know whether you've made a mistake or not. I'm in favor of employing the gentleman. He is who he is. If you want to put a 30-day review or 60-day review, I'm not talking about months. The last contract I did, and that was my fault, it was a six-month review, and I made it lapse. We, we did it, but it was late. That was my fault. I forgot. Nobody reminded me, but we forgot. So we make mistakes. I chose somebody, not this gentleman, originally. I had some issues with this gentleman. But I think they're being resolved. In fact, at one time, he called me at the house, and he says, I've got some issues. I don't want to be considered. Couple of days later, he says, I think I've solved the issues, I like to be back on the list. I says, sure, why not? So I've gone, I called him today, as a matter of fact, today, this afternoon, and went over a couple of things. Is he telling me the right answers? I don't know. For him to say, yeah, I'll come in and be assistant, or this, that, and the other, maybe he just really wants the job, and he'll just consent to anything just to be here. I don't know that for sure. But I do know one thing, the amount of calls I got after the last meeting, number word, number one word I remember was, it was an embarrassment. And it really was. It was an embarrassment. And I don't want to go through that again with the agency that you spoke about, because I looked at that agency, and their primary position is to find personnel for corporations, not so much government. I have to tell you that.
They have two branches.
Okay.
So you're not-
Anyway, that's, that's just for the sake of information.
Oh, I appreciate that.
So anyway, I'm definitely in favor of your reconsideration. I think that's the motion that we are tending to first.
And just to be clear, so when I, so there's two motions. It's the motion to reconsider. If that passes, there's a, I said, there's another motion, there is, but there, there's not another motion that needs to be made. The motion that's being reconsidered, which I look back at the minutes, was Councilwoman Jolyn's motion, that was seconded by Councilmember Rosenthal, is automatically placed back on the table. And that was the motion to authorize negotiations with Mr. Cole for the, for the manager position. So that, so if this gets approved, that, my, I just want to make, my point was, that motion is automatically back before you. Nobody needs to make that motion again. And then we'll obviously have to have public comment.
John, have we had public comment yet? Because I had went to the restroom.
There's no public comment on the motion to reconsider.
Okay.
But there will be public comment, if that motion passes, there will be public comment on the, once the other motion gets placed back on the table. The motion for reconsideration is a procedural motion.
And we do have a motion and a second to-
You got a motion and a second?
Correct. Councilmember Gregg made the motion, Councilmember Rosenthal seconded.
And if there's no further conversation, Marnie, call the roll.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry. So the, the reconsideration was for my motion, which was to hire Mr. Cole?
Correct.
So that's what-
From January, from January.
From the last-
From last month, yeah.
Yeah, are we re-
Reopen that vote.
Yeah, okay. That's what I'm voting on right now.
And that motion will, if it passes, that motion will automatically be laid back on the table.
No, what, okay.
You're, you're not voting on your motion now. You're voting on the motion to reconsider.
That Mark and Henry seconded.
Right, the motion is-
Confirm the vote that we had in January.
Yes, got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Okay, Marnie, would you, does everybody understand? Because I'm gonna ask her again to call the roll.
Excuse me, didn't originally her motion and my second failed?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
How can we go back to the motion that failed? Because the motion to deny is with these three.
Well, because Councilmember Gregg made the motion.
He was part of the prevailing.
Anybody, so for a motion for reconsideration, it has to be made by whoever was on the prevailing side. It can be seconded by anybody.
Yes.
Yep. So Mark was on the prevailing side in defeating that motion.
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Gregg was on the prevailing side in defeating that motion. So he made it, and you seconded, which it's all permissible on the procedural end.
Everybody understand? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please? We had Councilman Gregg made the motion, and Councilman Rosenthal made the second, for everybody to understand.
Okay, Councilman Gregg?
Yes.
Councilman Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Jolyn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Pinder?
No.
That motion passes four to one.
Okay, so that, the motion that was, is, has been reconsidered, is laid back on the table. That was a motion made by Councilwoman Jolyn and seconded by Councilman Rosenthal to, motion to authorize negotiations with Robert Cole for the position for village manager. And that will require public comment.
So do, do we have to vote on that again, John, or not?
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, the reconsideration just brings the motion back. You still have to vote on it.
Marnie, let's open public comment.
Okay, we have Van Cadenhead, Joe Wishmeyer, Deb Gillis, Sue Miller, and then Don Horton. So start with Van and then Mr. Wishmeyer.
Embarrassing is an understatement. But as a point of order, Mr. Mayor, we pulled three items from the consent agenda to be discussed that Mr. Rosenthal wanted. That was Tab 7, 8, and 9, and I wanted to discuss Tab 9, and we never had that discussion about any of those three things.
Excuse me one minute. We are gonna go to those in order? Okay? Kimberly, would you like to tell him real quick?
Yes, so we did, we're following the agenda in order. The consent agenda was passed with three items pulled. Those will be added into the agenda separately.
Thank you for the clarification. That's fine.
Okay.
Just so you understand.
Okay, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that those three tabs are gonna be discussed at some point, and I appreciate that. Once again, we have gone through six months of waffling and, and changing your mind and, and not having any kind of leadership or, or direction or, or, you know, the, the discussion has been all over the board about, and it was never a prerogative to have 5-0. The one guy, Julian Jackson, said he didn't want to be the manager if he couldn't have a 5-0. Now, for some reason, everybody picked that up as what, what the, the rules were here in Alamoata, that if you didn't have a 5-0, you couldn't be here. Well, you know, 3-0 is a majority, and 3-0 should have been respected. And if two of you don't like the guy, it's been clearly established that in, you know, however you write the contract, 60 or 90 days, if he doesn't pan out, then you can, you know, nullify the contract and move on to another place. And to throw all this in about an assistant manager, it obfuscates the, the idea of hiring a manager, which had nothing to do with hiring a manager, was getting an assistant manager, was not even a question. And to bring in the, the Haff, Mr. Haff, there's, there's not been a, any kind of a discussion among the council to have three competing bids for a headhunter. You know, suddenly, it just, his name comes out of the ether, and all of a sudden, he's right in the running with everybody else. Well, you know, that's not how you do things. That's not how the, that's not how a business works. That's not how the military works. That's not how, it shouldn't be the way that this place works, because it's, it's namby-pamby, wishy-washy, back and forth, and, and, you know, you, you go around in, in a circular firing squad, and you end up in the same place. It is embarrassing. It's very embarrassing to have to sit out here and watch it. And everybody that was in Tallahassee was shaking their heads, and, and some of you that, you know, were, you know, adjusted to that reaction. And, and I hope that you adjust to this reaction and give the guy a shot. You know, if it's a 3-2, let's have a 3-2. Let's go with that and go with the possibility of, you know, changing his, his, his length of time. Thank you very much. That, that's, you know, I've said what I want to say, but, but get off the pot.
Thank you, Van. Who's next, Marnie?
Next is Mr. Wishmeyer. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wishmeyer. You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. With the thought of trying to hire a manager as an assistant manager, to me, really doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because how can you evaluate someone who is in competition with the manager that's in there right now? What happens if the manager and the quote assistant disagree on matters? Then who's gonna win out? That's gonna create more turmoil than what we already have, if that's even possible. Obviously, councils in the past have had no problem getting rid of managers, since how our average is only two years. So if you hire the man, you need to make sure that you give him full control. You cannot evaluate somebody who is not in complete control. And what if our current manager maybe changes her mind and decides that maybe she would like to apply for the manager job? Well, then there will be turmoil between the two in the competition over who's right and who's wrong, and somebody, and I'm not saying it would happen, but maybe somebody would try to make the other one look bad. The last thing we need is more turmoil at the manager position than what you have already created so far in the last six months. So let's make a decision, let's try it, let's go for it, we've done it in the past, and let's move on. Thank you.
Who's next, Marnie?
And next is Deb Gillis.
Deb Gillis, Alamoata. This is an important decision.
This is an important decision. But we've been through this before, and you just need to move ahead. The five oh vote should be, at the end of the day, if it's a three-two, the two should, at least in their mind, go, okay, this is what the majority decided, and I will support this, and I will try to make it work the best we can. It wasn't my first choice. But as a council, that's what you should be doing anyway. If you're on the losing side of the vote, then you support the winning side of the vote. That's how you move things along. I don't know how many employees that I've hired...Henry, you've hired a bunch, I know, that I thought, oh, man, this is just the right person. And they don't turn out to be. And then the one that I wasn't too sure about turns out to be my shining star. Until you see somebody in action, you're not going to know. And action means at the top of the seat. No offense to Kimberly, but it's got to be in that seat. It's got to be at the top, because that's the only way you're going to know. What you do need to do, though, is whether it's three months, six months, nine months, or whether it's three, six, and nine, if you're going to do a review, you've got to do the review. You've got to give them a fighting chance to tell them what they're doing wrong that you dislike. It's only fair to them. Thank you.
Marnie, so anybody else?
Sue Miller, Lower Matocumbi. I think the most important thing that I can say to you is that if you hire an assistant manager, the assistant manager will work for the manager. He will not work for you. If you hire him as a manager, he will work for you. You'll know whether he's following your instructions and whether you can deal with him, because he will be your employee. If you hire him as an assistant, he will be Kimberly's employee. And as Kimberly's employee, he's going to bring with him nineteen years of executive experience, working for someone who's been with us for six weeks and doesn't have the same kind of executive experience. How is she going to judge the man that has nineteen years of experience? You're not going to be able to judge him, because he's not going to be working for you. I think it's really important to hire somebody that's going to work for the council. Thank you.
Who's next, Marnie?
For the record, I'm Don Horton, Isla Marata. And Mark, I want to thank you for stepping up and asking for this to happen again. I want to thank you for listening to the citizens and the voters of Isla Marata. And I want to thank y'all for all considering this, reconsidering this again. I know it's a tough decision. I'm certainly not going to tell you what to do, but I'm asking you to please move on and let us have a manager. Let the staff have a manager. Let Kimberly go back to her job, and let's move on. That's what we need to do. Thank you.
Anybody else, Marnie?
No, sir.
I didn't know to sign up. This is my first time here. I would like to say something.
Come on, come on. Just tell us your name.
Thank you. My name is David White, and I live down in Lower Mat. It is embarrassing, what's been going on here the last couple of months. We're a divided council here. We can't agree on this. We get a three to two. We're never going to see a five and oh on, really, any of the big issues here. But this is what I see what's happening. You're hiring the manager at Publix. You have put it out there, we want to hire this manager. You get your person, and you go, now, we're going to offer you the head cashier job, with the potential you can move up if you're good enough. And that's kind of where I see this going. You know, Hollywood's already ran this show. They had a show called The Apprentice. You're going to bring in a couple of people and work two days, three days, whatever our schedule is. Why don't we just bring in a camera crew and make a little money off of it while we're doing it? If we're going to embarrass ourselves, let's go ahead and embarrass ourselves. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
Let me double check. No, sir.
Public comment is now closed. All right, so John, what do we need to do now? Vote on this again?
Yep, yeah, it's a roll call vote, yes.
Okay. All right, council, any further discussion?
John, if you could just clarify the exact motion that we're voting on.
Yeah. It was a motion to authorize negotiations with Mr. Robert Cole for him to serve as the village manager.
And that we have selected him as our...
As the choice, yes.
Winning candidate, yes.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
John, could you remind me who moved and seconded?
It was moved by Councilwoman Jolyn and seconded originally by Councilman Rosenthal.
Okay, Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Prior to my vote, I've gone through, and I counted them, almost 140 applications over the years for this position. I don't care to go through anymore, at least for the next few months anyway. I vote yes.
Okay, Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And that motion passes five to zero.
All right, let's move on. Let's go...John, do we need to go back to seven, eight, nine now?
That was built into the other one, yeah.
Do we need to give direction on who will initiate that negotiation?
Yes, direction would be...
Well, let me provide that for you then. So I want to...because this is such a delicate conversation, I wonder if we could get a consensus on asking...basically, taking you out of the scenario, Henry, because of the polarizing nature of this, of how this has gone down, I would wonder if we could have John authorize...or authorize John to reach out to Mr. Cole and begin a negotiation.
Well, him and Allison, I would say, because...
Whatever.
Right, John?
It would be done through the village attorney's office.
Right. Yep.
So is...so that...and then do we have...do we want to give some guidance about salary range and that sort of thing at this point?
I would ask if there's going to be guidance, since I'm able to speak with each of you individually, either me or Allison, that we get guidance from you individually, so that it just is more helpful in our negotiations, so it's not...because if it's said now, I assume Mr. Cole is watching, he would know, I guess, what the number would be. So I would ask that we do have that conversation individually with my office.
Are we comfortable having that negotiation be led by Westerota?
Yes.
With nothing personal? Because I feel like the less...
I think it is, but thank you anyway.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just guessing.
Okay.
Don't worry about that.
Okay, we...unless...yeah, we can...we will reach out to Mr. Cole and bring back a contract for council's ultimate approval.
When?
Goal is next...the next meeting, absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it's dependent on...it's a two-way negotiation, but our goal is to jump on this immediately and get this brought back. And if council's willing to have a special meeting, we can do that, too.
John, how about...can I comment?
We're going to ask Mr. Cole.
I spoke with Mr. Cole a couple of times in the last ten days, and I believe I could paraphrase what he said, is he's ready to start immediately, provided he can find a place to live. He's ready to go to work, but he needs a place to live.
Okay, so let me ask this then, Kimberly. What I'm trying to get at is, how long is Kimberly, since we're going to keep her here for a while till we transition into him? Is this going to be thirty days, forty-five days?
Well, our next scheduled meeting is the beginning of March, so that's...unless we have a special call meeting before then, that's the earliest I can bring it back to the council. So Kimberly's...the current employee interchange agreement runs through March 8th. I believe our council meeting is on March 9th or 10th. I'd have to look at what that Tuesday is. So there is another agenda item in here that extends the employee interchange agreement. And obviously, there's a fourteen-day termination period in that interchange agreement, so, you know, county could stop it at any...you know, could stop it at fourteen days, so could we. So, you know, I'm happy to, like I said, if you all want to do a special call meeting, if we can get it finalized before then, I'm happy to bring it back before the March meeting. But as of right now, that's the earliest I could bring back based on scheduled meetings.
And Marnie, what is...when is that meeting? Is it the eighth or ninth? The ninth? Without looking at a phone.
It's the...the next meeting is March 12th.
Yeah, March 12th.
So is there appetite for a special call meeting?
No, I'm not. I'm not, but that's just me.
What about you, Mark?
I have some potential travel plans, and I'm afraid of a conflict before I say anything. I mean, if we can...I'm open to the idea of it.
I mean, again, I think the reason that we're having...well, I do think time is of the essence for all, for all.
What I can do is...because it's obviously going to be dependent upon, you know, a finalized agreement or an agreement in final form to present to you all. What I think we can do is we can get ourselves to that point, or when we're just about to that point, and then we can work through either my office or through the clerk to reach out to the five of you to see if there's an appetite for a special call meeting, you know, between whenever that time period is and the March 12th meeting. Because I don't want somebody to say, you know, I can do it, but then...or you rearrange travel plans, but, you know, like I said, it's a two-way negotiation. I don't know what Mr. Cole is going to ask for. So, you know, I think that might be the best way to do it, and we can circle back in hopefully very quick order. I mean, we know this is a priority for the council. It's a priority for staff as well, to get this taken care of. So I think I would suggest that I do that, and then, as I said, either I or Marnie can reach out to schedule.
Right, because I have two travel dates coming up myself, so, end of February and then end of March.
Okay, so we can reach out, because it'll, you know, I'm not...you know, it'll be dependent on that, and if there's a consensus of council to have one, we can. If there's not, then, you know, obviously, we have an outside date of March 12th.
I just want to say one thing, that I've said many times before, but nobody paid any attention to me, that the housing and the salary are two different things. Tax-wise, they're the same. I just want to say it to say it, because when I wrote the last contract, I kept them separate. So just for the sake of interest.
Thank you.
Okay, so, John, are we okay? Can we back up to Tab seven now and go in order?
Yeah, so we will be into the resolution section, and we'll start with the Tab seven, which was moved.
Okay, Tab seven. Henry, you want to start it off, or you want me to have public comment first?
Oh, wait, let me read...can I read the title first?
I'm sorry, John.
It, "Tab seven is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marata Village Violence, Florida, approving work authorizations with Tim Matthews Tree and Landscaping, Inc., for completion of planting projects within the village, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, authorizing the village manager to execute work authorizations and providing for an effective date."
I'll go back to my original feeling as far as the process of bid. I think it should be applied in this for Tab seven.
Okay, Henry, can we let Peter come give us the report, please?
Sure.
Before we get into this, and then we're going to have public comment as well.
Thank you. So there's two, really, two parts to this resolution. You'd be authorizing the work authorization number four with Tim Matthews. That's for $2,800. That is within the village manager's authority to execute that. However, we've already gone over, exceeded $25,000 with Tim Matthews this year, therefore, we are bringing this to council. So the second part of this is we are asking for an additional $24,771 with Tim Matthews for this fiscal year, so we don't have to bring back projects like a $2,800 project each time. So to address your concern, so the village did issue a request for qualifications for landscapers to establish a landscapers' library. That was last year. Village Council approved three local landscapers, very well-established, very professional landscapers that we know well, Tim Matthews, Tree and Landscape, Avalon Gardens, and Conk Tree. I can say, my opinion is, this is working excellent. It's really beneficial to the village to have this landscapers' library. So when we request a proposal for a planting project, we have a line-itemized proposal, each plant, so pot size, price, and those are fixed prices. Like, they're not going to increase those. I'm extremely familiar with how much plants cost. There's lines for sod, mulch, watering. That's pretty standard. So we're getting very fair quotes. This is a competitive business. We are going to know if they are charging us too much. And we all know these companies. They're local. They're doing a great job for us. So we put out the RFQ, therefore, we aren't soliciting bids for, say, $2,800 projects. It seems to be working well. That's all I have to say. Staff report.
Any questions for Peter?
Yes.
Go ahead, Henry.
The RFQ, to me, is not exactly the same as a bid.
Understood.
Right.
Yes.
So if you understand my problem with the RFQ, shouldn't there be a process beyond the RFQ, such as a bid?
So we used to, prior to this library, we used to request quotes. We used to get three quotes. We did that for years. We've been doing that for years. Our costs aren't changing at all. These quotes are coming in the same. With respect, I understand...AJ understands the costs of our landscaping projects. We've been getting these quotes for years. They're not increasing their costs because we have established this library. Could we put each little project out to bid? This $2,800 project, that was for Library Beach. We just redid the playground there, planted all new plants, super nice. So we're going to be doing projects like this. Could we put all these out to bid? We could, but it's a much more lengthy, difficult process, and it puts staff in a really weird position when we keep requesting quotes from these landscapers that we know really well and not selecting them. It was difficult. I could say that with, you know, confidence. So this library is working really well. We rotate, we use one, go to the next one, next project, we go to the next one. So, I mean, if council wants us to go back to a bidding or a quote method for these landscaping projects, sure, but in my opinion, this library is working extremely well.
Yeah, Peter, and it's also very time-consuming and costs money every time we're going to go...that you're going to do a bid for $3,000. And, you know, I understand what you guys explained to me today in there, is that how we just get this done, and, you know, we know that all three of us...I mean, all three of these guys are good, so...
Well, that's a fair point. It's a lot more effort.
Okay, anybody else got anything to say? Okay. All right, thank you, Peter. All right, public comment's now open, if anybody'd like to speak, Marnie.
Yes, Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, Lower Matocumbi. I think that one of the things that you've talked about over and over and over again, and I've never done anything about it, is changing the $25,000 threshold so that it's a little more realistic, so you don't have the staff working on $23,000 landscaping plans. Instead, the staff can assign those. And it just seems to me a better approach than to always waive competitive bidding. Competitive bidding is a requirement of our regulations, and so it's better to change Competitive bidding is a requirement of our regulations, and so it's better to change the regulations than to, to ignore the requirements. Thank you.
Any other public comment, Marnie?
Let me double-check on Zoom. Nope.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Do I hear a motion from?
I have a question, with the council. She brings a very valid suggestion. If we agree on that at some point, what's the process to change it?
It's a fairly simple process, I mean, I'd be, if, if there's direction, or if there's a will from the majority of the council, I can, I would bring back an ordinance that would simply just strike through the twenty-five thousand, and make it, I know that we had talked before, the number I seem recalling in my head was fifty thousand, whatever the number be, it's, it's a fairly simple process to bring back, and you'd have two, two readings on it, and then it would become, become, you know, law within the village.
It's not my position to ask the council, it's your position, I suspect.
Well, I mean, no, there's five of us up here.
Well, are you in agreement to raise it to fifty?
Just as a point of order, I don't think that's on the table right now.
It's not, but we could say yes or no, and he could draw, draw it up.
No, no, I don't think we can do that, maybe point of order. It's not, it's not the motion that's on the table, we, why are we talking about it?
I mean, if there's, if
Try to take advantage of the situation.
Consensus, Elizabeth, that he could do this and bring it back at another meeting, at a later date. That's what they're both asking for. So, if we want to put this on the agenda later, at a later date, we can do that, we can vote on it as is, and we can come back with that, what, that's what you're saying.
I'm saying we're getting off track, we should just focus on the motion.
I, I understand.
And I, I would love the support of that.
Henry just brought it up, just now, so that's what, and then after Sue talked, that's why he brought it up, so.
Rather than wait for another meeting to decide on something like this, that he could draw up and bring it back to us, that's all.
Okay, council, what's the will of the council? Do we want to do this, or we want to have him come back at another meeting? Put it on the agenda?
You mean approve what we've got on the agenda?
No, no, I'm talking about what Henry just brought up, what John said.
Yeah, I'd like a, I just, I think, I'm, I don't know if I'm comfortable with it or not, like, to have a little bit more input.
Let's, let's, let's stay right on
Doesn't sound like a bad idea?
Tab seven, and vote on, do I hear a motion for tab seven?
I move to approve tab seven.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
John, we're on eight.
Okay, tab eight is, sorry, resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village Violence, Florida, approving work authorization number six with CPH LLC, for Founder's Park Breakwater Restoration Construction Observation and Construction Engineering and Inspection, authorizing village officials to implement the terms and conditions of the agreement, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, authorize the village manager to execute the work authorization, and providing for an effective date.
Peter, you got anything you want to give us on this, please?
Sure, just very briefly, the village is very close, maybe this week, possibly next week, issuing a request for proposals for contractors to construct the breakwater restoration. The construction, engineering, and inspection is a necessary component of a major construction project like this. We are suggesting utilizing our engineer of record, that's been working on the project for four years for us, CPH, this is a work authorization for that CEI, it's time and materials, if you'll notice, so this isn't a lump sum, we are, we'd be paying them for the, their effort. Looking for approval for CPH, for the CEI.
Council, any questions for Peter on this? Been a long time coming. All right, with that being said, Marnie, we have any public comment?
I don't have anyone signed up.
All right, that being said, public comments closed, council?
Move for approval?
Second.
Uh, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
I'm just looking at the numbers, I'll approve it. But, yeah, we're thirty-nine thousand for the concept, thirty-five thousand for the design, thirty-four thousand for somebody to oversee it, just seems to be a little excessive, I'm not saying, I, I won't approve it, but just seems to be a little excessive. I get the questions, a lot of times I bring things up, that, these things are not my ideas, these are people that are talking to me, so if I bring it up now, at least there's some answers to some of these people, I'm not looking at you directly, if you understand that. So, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Tab nine, John?
Tab nine is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village Violence, Florida, updating procedures for the village council, and providing for an effective date. This, this actually came about as a result of the last two Keys Days, meetings that we went up to, councilmember Rosenthal alluded to the one, I guess, a little over a year ago now, and then the last Keys Day, we were up, councilman Gregg and councilwoman Jolyn were there, and then Kimberly and I got to speaking, and it'd be, you know, we were both of the opinion that the village could utilize, could use a procedure to establish legislative policies and priorities, and the built-in change here, the first built, proposed change would do that, it would require the, the manager to create a workshop by no later than June thirtieth of every, of each year, to discuss legislative priorities with the council. Then flowing from that workshop, the manager would bring back a list of priorities, or a, a book, as, as councilmember Rosenthal referred to, that the county has, to be formally approved by the council, so that we can then, number one, give our marching orders to our lobbyists, so our lobbyists know, these are the approved things that we should be chasing after, that the village wants us to do, and then, number two, to give us more ammunition when we go up, whether it's a Keys Day, or other days that we meet with our elected, our elected officials, so that the, any one of us, whether it's staff or individual council members, know that we are authorized to speak and lobby on behalf of these priorities, because they have been approved by the village council. That's the first recommendation we have. Second recommendation is similar, it's to create a strategic planning workshop every year, and that would be by, by January thirtieth of each year, and again, this is something that the council has talked about, is doing some strategic planning, and this is to make sure it's built into your procedures, that, okay, this is something that we expect, and this is something that our, the manager is going to need to do. And then the last item, I'll just be very brief, it was just, with the addition of the reports at, at the end of the agenda, we needed to update, you know, the agenda, and, so we listed out the supplementary reports, as are requested by council.
Yeah, just so you guys know, I talked to Ryan when I was up there, and he's more than willing to come down here, him and Joseph, to help us on, and I told John and Kimberly this today, to help us, because I think in the past, they have called, and they were told that we don't have any projects. Okay, that's what our lobbyist told me, he called me to see, hey, you guys don't have anything, so that's what, what he's talking about, so.
And I would envision that your lobbyist would participate in that workshop at the request of, of the manager, I mean, that, I would envision them to be part of that, so that they can advise you all as well, of things that, you know, opportunities that may be there, that we might not be aware of down here in the Keys.
Uh, Marnie, we have anybody to speak on public comment on this item?
Uh, yes, I do, we have Van Kadenhead.
I'm still Van Kadenhead. I, I totally agree with this motion to, to formalize what we want to have happen in the first month of the year. I think that would be a, a melding of the strategic planning process, along with all the priorities that all five of you have, and have input from the, from the public, knowing that there's going to be an instruction given to our lobbyists, because it's not right, I mean, we're, we're playing behind the curve here, if the lobbyist has to call us and ask us what we want. We should be giving them the book this thick already, you know, we, we've, we've established that we need this, 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 and this, and these are your priorities, please pursue them for us. We've not done that, which is probably why we've not had all the success we could have had with the lobbyists. And, and I'm still open to the fact of, every time that the, the year goes around, that we should, yeah, see if we've got the best lobbyist, and see if we could use another lobbyist for a certain item that was in that priority list, you know, because we don't just necessarily have to have Gray, whatever it is, for, to be our sole lobbyist, if, if that's not their specialty. You know, we ought to be able to branch out and have two or three lobbyists, if we have two or three different fields of endeavor that we're interested in. So I, I think this is a really good idea, I hope you vote for it, and I hope that we are able to present the lobbyists with the wishes of the people of Isla Marada through you. Thank you very much.
Marnie, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed, council, do, we want any discussion, or I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Second it.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, John, are we on eleven?
We are, Mayor, would anybody be interested in a short break?
Break? I think so.
Yes.
I think so.
You know, those of us with small bladders, you know, all that good stuff.
Okay.
How, when would you like to reconvene?
Uh.
It is eight-twenty-eight.
Eight-twenty-eight, eight minutes?
Eight minutes, you got it. All right.
They always tease me, we say five minutes, and we take ten minutes.
Not seven and a half, not eight and a half, eight. You got it.
In order, please.
How did the mics went on? How'd that work?
Hey, can we, can we move on these and get out of here?
I, I'm, I'm done, dude. You guys, you guys can stay till two in the morning for all I care.
Motion for everything.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Knock it out. Mr. Quick, can you help us out on number 11, please?
Yep. Number 11 is a resolution to the Village Council of Alamoada Village of Islands, Florida approving the final rankings and recommendations of the RFP 23-17 Evaluation Committee for selection of a contractor for the Green Turtle Hammock Nature Preserve Scenic Overlook Pavilion Project, authorizing village manager and village attorney to negotiate agreement for the requested services, authorizing village manager to execute the agreement, authorizing village manager to expend budgeted funds, and providing an effective date.
Peter?
Hey, thank you. So as you're aware, the village has been attempting to procure a contractor to construct the pavilion project and associated developments at the Green Turtle Hammock Nature Preserve. A previous attempt through a, a previous request for proposals came back with bids that were far greater than what we had expected based on an engineer's estimate. At the village council's direction, we went ahead and rejected all those bids. We reissued the RFP and included our engineer's estimate in there as a guide. We also asked the contractors to provide us with two options. A second option being just to construct that pavilion without the second story roof as to reduce costs. And then we also put out some messages to local contractors, try and get some local bids because that's something that we had lacked and another reason we felt the bids were so high because of travel and possibly lodging costs. So we reissued the RFP. That was in November of 2023. We received two proposals. One was from Native Construction. The second was from Person Services out of Fort Lauderdale. So the evaluation committee that reviewed the bids did make a, are making a recommendation to select Native Construction with a proposed cost as, or cost proposal of $1.7 million. And that was with the option one to construct as designed, including the roof. So the, the evaluation committee has agreed on this recommendation for Native with that option one, and that is as designed, currently designed as you, as you have seen it and approved it over the past couple of years. So we did not, we did not feel, the evaluation committee did not feel there was enough cost difference between the two options. It was only about $200,000. So that's why we're recommending as designed. So we have identified the Parks and Recreation Impact Fee as an appropriate funding source for this project. Our FY 23-24 budget does include $1.5 million for developments at Green Turtle. The village has received two grants for this project, one from DEP, the other from TDC, that potentially could fund up to $590,000 of this project. So this is within our budget now. And the staff is recommending that the village council adopt this resolution, approve the evaluation committee's recommendation of Native, and authorize the manager and attorney to enter into an agreement with Native to construct this project. Thank you.
Any questions for Peter?
I have a question. I have a comment. You know, I look at the observation deck. We live in the Florida Keys. How long do you think someone's going to stand up on that observation deck in the sun? Not very long. Why did we even go that route instead of doing like maybe a couple tiki huts that people could sit under, maybe some picnic tables, something, and maybe just a small little area that only six people at a time could go up? I don't think you're going to have a line of people going up there to the observation decks. I think this is ridiculous amount of money. I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, I mean, I know it's been going on and I know everything takes time and stuff, but I, I just don't see that deck being utilized. What are they going to do when they get up there and stand up there? Nothing? Look around and then come down?
Well, there is, there is a roof on it. So the one, one reason is that.
I thought there wasn't a roof.
No, there is. There is a roof.
Oh, because it's only another $200,000, right?
Yeah. This was as, as originally designed. So one reason that we, while the council and the community has, have we pushed forward with this observation deck. It's something that's in the management plan for this property is we need some type of observation deck on this property. So this has been approved by village council along the way. It's something that the community wanted, and that's just what we've been moving forward with.
Yeah, go ahead, Henry.
I spent 20 years there. And what do you think they're going to see that they have to have an observation deck or anything like that? I said something to you in jest, but maybe I was further correct. You can't see anything besides what you're going to see. I don't care how high you go. I'm not suggesting that part of the project. I said to you, cut the trees. Real simple. You have a deck chair, you cut the trees. You can see all over the place. You don't need anything permanent. I like what you just said. And I think for a million dollars or what is it, whatever it's going to cost us, in my opinion, it's not well spent. That's, I have to tell you that. So having spent 20 years plus there, I know what it looks like. Nothing changes. If you cut the trees all the way down, it's still the same thing. You don't have to be up. You don't have to picnic tables and all that nonsense, and certainly don't have to spend. How, how much money is coming out of the general fund to do this?
1.5.
This is the Parks and Rec Impact Fee. So it's meant to be spent on projects like this. We have the funds available. It's.
No, I understand that you got funds available, but how much of the funds available are the people of Alamoada putting up?
Well, this is an impact fee. It's not.
Okay.
Okay, so Peter, can I ask a question? This is the, the Florida community, whatever that.
Yes.
Trust, you just mentioned the management plan.
Yes.
We have to do certain things, stipulations, when we, they put up the money to buy that property. And, and I want everybody to understand, this happens all over the state. I mean, the rails to trails right now are river to sea preserve. These, you know, Wilton Simpson's office has $300 million, he said at the Wildlife Quarter, to buy more property for this, these rails to trails that, and they do things like this all over to protect their buying more property. Then he says they have another 300 million, but I, I just saw that when I was in Tallahassee. I got it from their office, all the proposed land that they want to buy for this river to sea loop where like it's up around Putnam, Flagler, you can ride for 250 miles. And, um, you know, this is a big thing why people are moving here. And I, I, you know, Sue, you're laughing about it, but that is a premier piece of property. There's beautiful mating owls there. I've seen them myself. I've walked the woods that the Indians walked in right there. To me, I, you know what? I, I don't, to me, we have to follow the guidelines. Okay?
Can't we follow the guidelines and build something a little more, makes more sense? It's not like you're going to see whales by standing up there or dolphins.
Are we going to do lectures up there? Is it to where a scientist can come and do?
You sit out there. It's too hot.
Yeah, that was one of the main points of this was to provide a, a, a component like exactly what you're saying, Mayor, an educational component, a place where groups could come and have lectures. There's really nothing like this in the community, you know, a two-story gazebo pavilion overlooking the bay. There is a nice view there. I mean, we've kind of gotten up to that level. The mangroves are trimmed there. You could see Florida Bay and the Little Basin. It's, it's quite a spectacular view from up there. And you could see the top of the hammock, too. So I mean, this, this has been approved by the council all along the way. So this isn't anything new or that I'm trying to push forward. This has just been the will of the, the community and the council for almost five years now. I met with Councilwoman Joel in there at least five years ago as part of a community member, and this is one of the things we thought was a great idea.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you if you could just refresh us on the timeline here.
We started the discussions as soon as I started the job, which was over five years ago, and we met shortly after that. So we have been in planning for this for about five years and two months.
The, I think the problem, Peter, we got to promote that property a little more so people know, because if they ever go there and, and just walk through the woods, walk those trails, man, and look at the birds there. I think there's even some crocodiles that live in those mangroves back there. But there is a pair. I don't know what kind of owls they are, but they're beautiful. And I've seen them many times. I've gone there and I've spent time on that property. Um, it's a very, very unique piece of property, and I'm glad that we have that and that we've protected it. So.
Thank you. Well, I, I'm going to move to approve it.
Okay. Do I, uh.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Peter. We got to have public comment first before we do that. All right. Any public comment, Marnie?
Yes. Van Cadenhead.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, because I was going to second if you didn't. Okay?
Well, I have to come in behind Ms. Mahoney and Henry. I think this is colossal waste of money. And it, we could put a large Seminole tiki hut there with four or five, uh, uh, picnic tables under it and accomplish the same thing for, for nothing, just about, you know? And, and to, to, just because you got the money doesn't mean you have to spend it. It's burning a hole in your pocket. You know, $1.7 million for something that's going to be used by how many people? I don't think that's a real good per capita capturing of, of, I mean, if we're going to use TDC money, that's fine. If we can get grants, that's fine. But we can do the whole project for that money. We don't have to go into the, to the Parks and Rec Fund to get that done. You know, it's, it's just a colossal waste. As far as I'm concerned, the amount, the, you know, the amount of people that are going to use it compared to the amount of money that you're going to spend. I mean, the thing looks like a, a, um, landfill dumping ground right now. I mean, it's got all that fill in there. And why are we doing that? There's no reason to do that. I mean, Henry was there for 20 years. It's, the view's not going to change. You know, it's right there on the bay. They're going to get the wind. They're going to get the beautiful view of the islands. They're going to keep everything trimmed and, and neat and just build a big, uh, Seminole tiki hut, you know, for, for four or five picnic tables and let it go at that. That's all you need. You don't need some, a million and 0.7 million dollars. $710 per square foot is what you're going to spend to waste. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Uh, any other public comment, Marnie?
Yes. Joe Wishmeyer is on Zoom. Okay, Mr. Wishmeyer, go ahead.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. For the amount of money that you're going to spend in that area, how many people do you think in the summertime, when it's blazing hot and the mosquitoes are in full force, are going to want to stand out there to look out, to see anything they can see from, from other places? The gentleman earlier, um, public comment was speaking about how busy the pickleball courts are. You know, I think you'd be much better off spending that much money on something that more of the community is going to be able to appreciate and use rather than an observation deck in a mosquito land in the summertime. And $710 a square foot for an open pavilion, that just seems like a ridiculous amount of money for that particular area. So I would hope that you would vote no and put that money to better use for the citizens of Alamoada. Thank you.
Marnie, any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Hey, Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
No.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Nope.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
The motion passed three to two.
Tab 12 is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamoada Village of Islands, Florida, authorizing the village manager to establish a ride sharing service advisory selection panel, providing for the read advertisement of the RFP, defining the panel's duration, composition, duties, and responsibilities, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, are we, we're pulling this tab? Is that correct, Kimberly?
This is an, uh, this is a new tab. It was amended to replace the, um, uh, to replace the one that was originally in the, uh, the agenda.
Yes. So, um, as is my purview under section 10 of the RFP, I have rejected all bids for the transit RFP, the ride share RFP, and we will be, so this resolution is asking you for permission to go back out to bid, reconstitute a pan, a new panel to review those bids.
Okay.
Under my purview.
Okay, council, any questions before we go to public comment?
Why is everybody looking at me? Um, I, I want to say something quick. Um, okay, maybe the manager thing was embarrassing, but this is even worse to me. These people gave their time, their energy to do something good for this community, yet every step of the way, their roadblock came up. And we discussed it today, and I'm going to refrain from discussing it now, but people like Alina Davis, who worked six months on this with me, Jim Lashley, who has numerous phone calls, and again, I thank his wife for putting up with me. I've had conversations with Richard Clark. We looked into this in depth to find the better way, and I'm not getting rid of the service of ride share, but we have to be smart about how we do this. We, I mean, it cannot sustain itself the way it is. So we had other avenues to look at. And I am so disappointed in the last two days' activities in this village. And I know Maria's not here, and I'm pretty sure she's not here because of me. And AJ, I know you were a part of this. I can't believe what went on and what transpired. So I apologize to the ride share people who applied. I apologize to the people in this community and to the people who gave their time and energy to sit on this committee only to be shot down at the last minute. So I am truly, truly embarrassed about this. So.
Is that it, Vice Mayor?
That's it.
Anybody else on council like to?
I didn't have anything to do with it.
You got your own issues.
Henry, do you have anything you want to say?
I'd like to hear it.
Hear what?
I'd like to some conclusion.
We can't have a conclusion, and I'm speaking, I don't know if I should be or not. There are attorneys there and Kimberly here. Things were not done properly. And the committee was not given the right directions to do what they were supposed to do, whether that is an oversight, some people not knowing, uh, the way things should be done. Um, we had no choice but to pull it. And it was unacceptable and inexcusable. And, uh, so I, at this point, I don't know where we go from here. So, I mean, I, I don't know how much I can say.
You pulled it?
No, I didn't pull it. We legally had to pull it. How about, can I say that? Sorry.
No, Mayor Burtem, I will definitely address that. Um, so I did issue the rejection of all bids. I issued a memo, uh, earlier today at approximately 5:30 today. I issued a memo to all of the vendors rejecting all of our bids. And what you have in front of you is a request from me in the form of a resolution for us to constitute a new panel and go out to bid again. As John and I have agreed, is the cleanest way to do that. Um, we looked at whether or not we could take the bids as they stood and just simply reconstitute a new panel, take the bids as they were, you know, and go forward. Um, John felt that. And I always say, my mother always told me, listen to your accountant and your lawyer and your dentist. Um, so taking that advice, I am taking the advice of council that we should go out to bid again. Um, it would be absolutely negligent of me to put in front of you a recommendation to accept a bid through a process that was fatally flawed. And so we can go back and forth about why that was, how it was, how it came to be. That really doesn't bring us to any particular conclusion other than for me to tell you, and you can take it as it is, that I'm telling you, I would not in good conscience present that to you as something that I would want you to vote on. So the process that we used, it did not pan out the way that we would like it to. It did not pan out as it should have. So, um, we need to go back out.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, Marnie, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, I've got Van Cadenhead and Sue Miller.
Okay. All right. We're going to open public comment.
Sue Miller, Lower Meta Cumbia. I'm here to confess that it was because of me, from what I understand, that this was fatally flawed. And the reason that it was fatally flawed, according to what I was told, I just learned of this at 4:44 this afternoon. Um, it was fatally flawed because there were four proposals. One of the proposals did not follow the RFQ. It did not follow it in any way. It didn't, it didn't, they did not make a proposal that was requested in the RFP. When I scored them, I said, well, gee, this is non-responsive. Is it okay if I give them all zeros because it was non-responsive? And we had three staff members there that all said, yes, that's fine because it's non-responsive. You can give them zeros. AJ, Mary, and, and, um, Chris, Christiana. And so I said, well, if a zero is not acceptable, let me. And so I said, well, if a zero is not acceptable, let me rescore them based on whatever I thought was fair. But I didn't believe that they should be scored because they were non-responsive. The three members of the staff agreed they were non-responsive, and so therefore, they go, they said, it's okay that you do zeros. And now we are going through a difficult, we're going to lose grant money. We're going to go through, and now you're saying that you don't want those people on that committee, you want a new committee. We put a lot of time and energy. I spent one week studying those proposals. It was hundreds and hundreds of pages. It was not an easy process to go through. There are so many variables, and it's really disconcerting to see that you're going to throw it out because of me, because I was told that it was okay. Those are the people that were in that room from the staff that are typically part of a selection committee. And if they gave us the wrong instructions, then it is really upsetting to me, very. I just can't believe that you would be doing this to this committee. Who in the world would ever volunteer to go in and get advice from staff members and then be told that it's all for naught? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Mayor, I will only correct the record to say that the, um, flaw in the process had nothing to do with Ms. Miller's-
No, it didn't.
Process.
Right, right. All right, Sue, you understand that?
No, 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 don't.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, just, thank you, Kimberly. Go ahead, Van.
Bottom line, the Freebie, uh, experiment that we've been having for the last couple of years, or year and a half, or whatever, has shown, uh, that there is a definite need among the people of Alamo Rata to have this kind of a, uh, process go on. And whether it's, uh, Freebie that's going to do it, or whether it's going to be somebody else that's going to do it, uh, at the end of the road, we have to come up with some kind of public transportation for, for, uh, indigent retirees and people that, that don't want to drive home drunk. And, and I think it's, uh, incumbent upon you to make sure that this happens. Now, I don't think that, you know, the people that, that put in their time and effort on that committee don't need to be replaced. They need, we need to fall back and regroup and have the, the guidelines clear to them about, uh, what is required for, to, to have a, a successful, uh, system in place. And I don't think that just throwing up your hands and calling for a whole new set of everything is, is responsible or, or intelligent. It's just a total waste of people's time. And who's going to want to be on a committee that, like Sue said, that, uh, you know, follows by what the staff says, and then all of a sudden gets cut out, the, the whole project gets cut off at the knees? That's not, that's not going to, you know, that doesn't solve the problem, doesn't feed the bulldog. We need to have, fall back and regroup, use the same information that we were using to begin with, and, and have a, a reliable goal in mind and in sight for the whole range of discussions that happen up to the time that we get this new system in place. Because this new system needs to be in place. We need that kind of a, of a transportation system in Alamo Rata. And the, the need for it was, was shown, uh, on a monthly basis by, by what Freebie's, uh, uh, numbers were. And, uh, you know, whoever can do it better than that, fine. But we need something, and we don't need to just throw up our hands and, and throw out the baby with the bathwater. We need to fall back and regroup and, and tweak the system, and not, not insult the people that put in all that time and effort and energy into, to giving you the answer that you needed. Thank you very much.
And we have, uh, Dr. Harold Dalton.
Commissioners, uh-
Thank you very much for your time.
Better. Thank you very much for your time and effort. Um, I am the, uh, president of the Homeowners Association of Madeira Bay. Uh, I would like to volunteer for the committee.
Okay, any further public comment, Marnie?
No, sir.
Okay, public comments now closed. Kimberly, did you have something else you wanted, needed to say?
No, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
I, I just have a quick question. What, what is the timeline on this moving forward?
As quickly as humanly and legally possible.
Okay, so what did you want us to, uh, you and John want us to do?
Um, it would be a motion to approve the, uh, resolution as presented.
Do I hear a, a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Hey, Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, tab 13, John?
We're on to tab 13, and just before we get to that, the, um, one of the, um, uh, ride-share panel members had asked me before the meeting if they are still under the sunshine. Um, I told them if the vote on this resolution was in favor, they would no longer be, because they would be sunsetted. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that the ride-share panel members are aware that they are no longer under the sunshine law, so they can speak with each other. Uh, obviously, if they serve on the new, the new panel, um, they would be subject to it again, but-
Okay.
So, uh, tab 13 is a resolution of the Village Council of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, approving a first amendment to work authorization number one between Page Excavating, Inc. and Alamo Rata Village of Islands, increasing the not-to-exceed amount, authorizing the village manager to expend budgeted funds, authorizing the village manager to execute the first amendment, and providing for an effective date.
AJ?
Yeah, good evening. Um, so this is our first amendment to the authorization number one with Page Excavating. Uh, as we've explained, uh, previously, we've been monitoring our spending, uh, with this. Uh, we have not exceeded our 350,000 that was budgeted for this, uh, with the first not-to-exceed, but we are close. We are now within 20,000 of that. Uh, some of these issues have come from, uh, some breaks with the, the DOT projects, other homeowners, uh, items like that. Um, some of those are actually money that we do recoup, uh, but it doesn't reduce that not-to-exceed because it's still money that we're still spending out. Um, but what we're asking for tonight is, uh, is an additional 343,000, uh, to add to that not-to-exceed to get us through the rest of fiscal year.
Okay, council, any questions for AJ?
Is this still the only person you have to do this kind of work?
It's the only person in our continuing services agreement.
When was the last time it went out?
Uh, October of 2023.
Okay.
It's a five-year continuing service agreement.
Councilman Jolen, you have anything you want to say? Mark?
I was just going to move for approval, but we have to have public comment.
Yeah, we got to do public comment. Okay, thank you, AJ. Uh, Marnie, any public comment?
Yes, Van Cadenhead and Sue Miller.
Okay, Van's not going to take it, but Sue's coming up.
This time, I'm representing the Alamo Rata Community Alliance. I'm Sue Miller, Columbus Drive, Lower Meta Cumby. I have been here before to discuss wastewater bills. Ten months ago, you approved over $4 million in wastewater invoices for work already completed and paid for. A primary complaint I had then was about the concrete rings around vacuum pit manhole covers. That approval included 3,009 vacuum pit concrete rings at $1,000 each. That was over $3 million. As a result of that, a wastewater audit was requested. A vacuum pit can serve anywhere from one to five homes. No one ever answered how many vacuum pits exist in Alamo Rata. Just a couple months after those, that $3 million of vacuum pits was approved, the village put out an RFQ for wastewater services and got only one response from the same contractor. Typically, you would rebid if you only got one response, but you didn't. The response included the quote on what Page Excavating would charge for concrete rings for vacuum pits, $800. If you had gotten that price on the 3,009, you would have saved $600,000 for our property owners. But did we really need to replace 3,000 rings? 21 of those 3,000 were on my street, Columbus Drive. We are on grinder pumps. We don't have vacuum pits. A wastewater audit was done, and I was pleased when the team from the village, including Buddy Pinder and John Quick, came down my street with the audit process. I was disappointed when the final audit came out, and they didn't report about the 21 vacuum pit rings that were not installed on my street, even though you were there to review my street, I assumed, because of the complaints I had. Tonight, we are being asked to approve in advance replacement of more vacuum pits, rings, 160, at $900 each, after you just approved a continuing service contract calling for them at $800. And now you're willing to accept a $900 charge. While the wastewater audit did not find significant wrongdoing in the limited samples they reviewed, there was an important warning to the village regarding requirements for government grants. The auditor, Markham, noted on page 20 of the audit that there was a lack of internal controls over the procurement process. Markham recommended that the village verify the procurement's provide full and open competition. Further, the audit stated the ability of the village to obtain subsequent funding could be impaired if procurement standards are not adhered to. So, here we are once again. Are we following the procurement standards? Shouldn't we receive more than one proposal? According to opinions that I found with the Florida Attorney General, continuing service agreements are not to be used to avoid competitive bidding requirements. I think you really need to give a lot of thought to all the expenses that you're, uh, running up with your wastewater program, and make sure that you put this out for bid again, to make sure that you have contractors that are able to put in a concrete ring for less than $900. Thank you.
Hey, Sue, tell us, Sue, please, tell us, since you said ICA, where Tom was the president, what is your position with ICA? So, for the record, because you said, you asked for five minutes, that's all, that's the reason I'm asking you. You said ICA, correct?
Alamo Rata Community Alliance. I am on the board of the Alamo Rata Community Alliance.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Marnie, any other, uh, public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, public comments now closed. Uh, do I hear, we have, want more discussion, or what are we going to do, guys?
We have to fix the pipes, or we're going to have a bad problem.
Well, AJ, can you come back up here for a minute, please? Okay, okay. Hey, this isn't all only to do with the rings around the gr- you know, vacuum pits.
Correct.
Or valves or anything. Isn't there, you know, breaks that we're having? We've had stuff happen with the aqueduct, with, with, with our lines being broke that we have to call Mark in for an emergency, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the concrete work isn't just around vacuum pits. It's also around, uh, the valves and, uh, the access, uh, for all of the low-pressure system as well.
Right, right.
Which is what is on Ms. Miller's-
So, but they have to pour new concrete when they put a stainless steel valve in the ground, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. Uh, any, council, have any other questions for AJ? I, I just wanted to point out that this isn't only that. I mean, we have breaks here and there, somebody's going to put a fence in and they drill through our line, you know, we have to-
Correct. Th- this is just, uh, routine maintenance, emergencies, um, things of that nature, large projects. Uh, we have a few coming up. Um, those are competitively bid. We don't use a continuing service agreement for that.
Okay, okay. All right, AJ, thank you.
I'll move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
My question is, there was an offering from Key Largo to do the work, maintain the system, and nobody here has sat down with anybody from Key Largo to come back and tell us something.
Henry, that, 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 that is not true, because John Quick, myself, AJ, Brian Cook, Kevin Wilson, we all went there and met with their engineers, Mr. Nick Mueller, who's their attorney, Peter Rozosko was there, Nick, Nick Rodriguez is there, and by the way, Mr. Mueller called me on Friday, Mr. Rozosko called me just a week ago about having a meeting with him, and the chairman of the board actually came over here at a meeting or two ago when his wife was, I mean, his daughter was having a, a dance recital, and have, have asked me to meet with them to discuss-
Mayor, I don't think that's what Henry's talking about. I think Henry's talking about maybe us going back to the county. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, or he's talking about-
To see what the difference would be? Is that what you're trying to?
I would like to know. I mean, I, I'm not satisfied with what we're doing and how we're doing it. It's just that simple. And if there is some way to alleviate our responsibility on all this stuff, I mean, I'm in favor of doing that. Now, these people called you, they called you to offer their assistance?
No, we, we, as a village, have to ask them to do that. But they, Peter would like for me to meet with him and the, and the chairman of the board.
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, I-
So I'd have your permission to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, so, uh, Marnie was asking, um, Henry hasn't given you a vote yet, correct?
Can I, can I restrain? Um, I'll say yes, just to move this, the project along.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
We are, uh, in tab the, what's that?
9:30, let's go home.
Yeah, tab 14.
How do we feel about moving to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
We've got issues tomorrow. We've got-
Second.
We've got, you know, important things to do tomorrow, bright and early, and we're going to be here Thursday.
That's right.
You good with that?
We're good. We good with that Thursday then? So we're all due tab 14 then, okay?
Yeah, so the, um, the remaining tabs will be continued to be heard on Thursday, uh, February 15th at 5:30 PM here at Founder's Park Community Center at 87,000 Overseas Highway. Those items being continued to Thursday are tabs 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 20. Okay, okay. All right, thank you, John.
All right, thank you, John.